Planning and zoning commission meeting of March 13th, 2025.
Everybody, please find a seat. And you guys haven't changed your clocks, it's been five after eight. Okay, if we could bring this meeting to order, please. Roll call of officers. Anyone wishing to speak on any of the cases, please check in with Eileen or with Janine, please.
Good morning. Commissioner Odogba?
Here.
Commissioner Lear. Commissioner Jimenez.
Present.
Commissioner Fisher.
Present.
Commissioner Acosta. Vice Chair Zerniak. Chair Sarge.
Here. Can we get a motion, please, for approval of changes to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Jimenez, second by Commissioner Fisher. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Old business, approval of the minutes from February 27th.
I move for approval of the minutes of February 27th.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Fisher, second by Commissioner Jimenez. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Old business? None? New business? There we go, case number SU 25-002. We have Albert and...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Albert Casillas, 845 North Motel Boulevard.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today's The Truth Under Penalty of Law?
I do.
Thank you.
Chair, before I start, I'm just gonna go ahead and hand out additional letters and petitions that were received by the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Good morning, Commissioners, members of the public. Our first case study is going to be a special use permit. We have the owner being Agoma Hill Investment LP, and the applicant's going to be Brandon May. This property is located north of the city of Sunland Park at 1240 Garner Road. The zoning is a T2 rural zone, and this application is to operate a cannabis establishment, which is going to consist of retail, consumption lounge, and cultivation in this T2 zone. The full property size is 48.33 acres. Here, we have a location map of the subject parcel. This is where the 40 acres are located, Garner Road. This is the Texas state line right here. And then we have Magnut further to the west of the property. And then here, we have the land use aerial map. Of course, you see that the majority of the, you know, the 48 acres is pretty much used for ag purposes. Right now, there is an existing home on the property. Immediately to the north of it, you have the Sierra de Rosales State subdivision, which is a subdivision that was established back in the 80s. You have another subdivision here to the south, which was established also like around the mid 80s as well. You look at the aerial, pretty much, it's, you know, large lot subdivisions, residential, low density, surrounded by ag development. And just a brief description, you know, this property is a little bit more than 48 acres. It's a T2 zone. There's one home, site-built home on-site, about 6,000 square feet. Before the UDC got adopted, this zoning on the property felt followed as a performance district. After, you know, the UDC got adopted, it went from PD to the T2. And like I said before, and like you saw in the aerials, you know, the property is pretty much surrounded by a mix of low-density residential and agriculture. A special use permit is required for a new cannabis retail business and production in a T2 zone. Garner Road is about a 50-foot right-of-way, which is counter-maintained. It is paved. Here's a close-up of the subject parcel, and we'll look at the site plan right now, but basically, you know, this is where, you know, the proposed location of the cannabis establishment is going to be at. We have Crawford Road over here, which is still counter-maintained, but it's just, it's not paved, it's graded. And then we have the La Union Lateral EBID Canal here, right to the, adjacent to the property line here. Look at the zoning map, it's, you know, it's right outside, well, it's north of the city limits of Sunland Park, but basically, everything around it, it's a T2 or a T3 designation. We do have a lot of industrial zones, properties, and commercial, but they're running pretty much, you know, south of Garner along Magnut Road. The request itself, you know, the applicant, Brandon May, came in in January to submit his request for the SUP. And then just reading off of his narrative, you know, he's proposing a multipurpose cannabis facility, integrating retail sale, drive-through service, and open-air consumption lounge in an on-site cultivation operation. Designed to create a unique and welcoming experience, the business will cater to both adult-use and medical cannabis customers while maintaining strict adherence to regulatory standards and fostering community engagement. Based on his, you know, on his narrative, he's proposing the retail operating hours to be from Monday through Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Outdoor consumption lounge on Friday through Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And then when you look at the site plan, it's, the cultivation will be under three controlled indoor or greenhouse environments. They're measuring about 98 to 24, 98 by 24, so a little bit more than 2,300 square feet. And that's each greenhouse. So here, we have an overall site plan. Like I said, it's mostly oriented towards the western edge of the property. This is the property line, so you have Crawford Road and then the EBID ditch over here, Garner Road. When you look at the measurements, basically, you know, he's at a minimum, you know, more than 300 feet away from any, you know, residential area. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but, you know, this measurement's almost 400, 400 feet right here on the rear, you know, to the edge of the greenhouses. He's calling them out at a, it's more than, or close to 400, 400 feet. And then about 250 feet here, you know, going across the proposed area. And I just kind of like zoomed in here, 450 feet from the rear property line. So you have Sierra de Rosales States here immediately north of the subject parcel, and then about 450 feet to where the greenhouses are going to be located. And then, you know, you move further south, and that's when you're going to have the retail and the consumption lounge. 25 letters of notification were mailed out. Signs were posted on the property, you know, there was a legal ad on the newspaper, and then, you know, when you go through your packet, you're going to see that there was a petition initially with about 150 signatures, and then today, we received, you know, more, more pages to that petition. Several letters, several emails are all included on your packet, and I counted about 40, about 40 emails that were received. And I counted about 40 emails that were received for this request. Here's the area of notification. Those were the properties that were notified. And then the following slides are just going to be a couple of pictures of the, you know, the subject parcel. So here I'm standing on the southwest corner of the property, you know, on Gardner Road and the EBID ditch, looking northeast onto the subject parcel. Currently, the property just sits kind of vacant. You can see the, you know, the residences of Sierra Dorado here to the north. Here's another picture of the subject parcel. And now I'm kind of looking northwest from Gardner Road, so this would be the EBID ditch over here, Crawford Road right next to it. Some of the residences of Sierra Dorado to the north. And then here's a picture of how Gardner Road currently sits. It is paved, it is county-maintained. This is the subject parcel. You kind of have a little ditch right here, and then, you know, the residences to the left of that. And then looking further west here from the, this would probably be the, around the southwest corner of the property, intersection of Gardner Road and Crawford Road, and then Magnut Road would be, you know, a little bit further down the road. And then from that same location, just looking back onto Garner, Garner Road. This is one of the intersections that's right across from the property, south of the property line, Paso de Bos Lane and Gardner Road. And now I'm just standing on the ditch here, looking north. So the proposed structures would probably be around this area right here. And then when you look south of the property, you know, south of Garner Road, you see some of the single-family residential homes that are right adjacent to it. And additional homes here. This is right south, south of Garner. Across the ditch, it's still, you know, vacant slash ag farmland. And then right to the east of the, you know, the subject parcel, you know, there's additional notifications that were done by the residents themselves concerning the SUP. So when we look at SUPs, especially for cannabis, these are the sections of the Unified Development Code that we've got to look at. You've got to look at potential traffic flows and impacts, the need for additional commercial activity, potential water and sewer needs, environmental sensitive areas, impact of the proposed SUP, and implementation of best management practices. So when it comes to traffic flows, I mean, like, you know, we saw the pictures, and I stated it, you know, throughout the presentation. Garner Road is a county-maintained 50-foot right-of-way. If approved, you know, the applicant will need to apply with county engineering for a direct access permit from Garner Road, and will have to submit an SCA or TIA to determine if additional road improvements are required. We saw the site plan. It's a 40-acre parcel, so the applicant does have sufficient room for off-street parking and for loading facilities. The need for commercial or residential activity, and how does it comply with Plan 2040, there's a couple of sections in there, you know, that relate to this proposed project as, you know, as presented. You know, staff does acknowledge that, you know, there is, you know, goals and actions in there that would support regional and small-scale businesses, but there's also goals in their addressing maintaining character of, you know, the existing area, safeguarding and extending, you know, desirable neighborhood character, safeguarding open space, developing in existing locations with existing infrastructure, and extend as necessary. Potential water and sewer needs, you know, the water will be provided by an existing onsite well. Subject system will handle wastewater for proposed operations. We do believe, you know, that there is sufficient infrastructure there for the proposed use. There has been no evidence submitted of any endangered or rare species of animal and plant life in the area. Impacts of the proposed SUP along Garner Road and surrounding area, you know, there are no other retail commercial uses, you know, that I can see. The area is predominantly agricultural and residential. This will be a cannabis retail facility with an outdoor consumption lounge and production via the three greenhouses that we saw on the site plan. And then if, you know, if approved, they're going to have to, you know, meet all the security measures as required by the Cannabis Control Division. You know, the applicant will implement best management practices. A certified contractor will follow best practices to construct the required fencing, landscaping buffer, et cetera, and any other rules and regulations as stipulated by the New Mexico Cannabis Regulation Act. So under our staff analysis, you know, when it comes to the decision or criteria for special use permits, as presented, you know, staff feels that it does not comply with the decision or criteria of the Unified Development Code. The proposed location of the cannabis retail and consumption establishment near the Sierra Dorado State community and surrounding residential and agricultural areas, plus the neighborhood opposition, consisting of numerous letters, public input, and a petition, does not promote the public health, safety, general welfare, and goes against the social spread of this community. Under our findings, which are included in your packet, finding number four, pursuant to the 204D decision or criteria, we don't believe that the SUP is consistent with the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the county per the intent of the UDC. And we're referencing goal G2.2, which is to ensure regulations supporting the plan requirements, more specifically safeguarding and extend desirable neighborhood character and safeguarding open space. Under a T2, the, you know, the SUP as presented for cannabis retail, consumption, and production does require special use permit, and the licensed premises must be 300 feet over residential property. Pursuant to the section G.2, the cannabis establishment is not located within 300 feet of a school or daycare center. The proposed location of the cannabis retail and consumption establishment near the Sierra Dorado State community and surrounding residential and neighborhood cultural areas is not conducive to a commercial operation, you know, plus the neighborhood opposition does not promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community and intent of the UDC. Also, per, you know, goal 502 G.9, the zoning administrator, planning and zoning commission, may apply conditions to a special use permit in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So based on the findings of fact, staff analysis, and agent's comments, we are recommending conditional approval of SUP 25002 to operate a cannabis, well, the use, the proposal is to operate a cannabis establishment for the retail sales with the following conditions. Our conditions for the request, you know, today is that this cannabis establishment be limited to cannabis production only, which will include three greenhouses, and will only be for the cultivation of up to 1,000 mature cannabis plants. Under two, no clients or retail sales are allowed on the property. And number three, it's something that I'm going to call out because it is on the matrix. When it comes to a cannabis microbusiness, and I'm going to go through each one of those items, what is a microbusiness? A microbusiness is a cannabis establishment that one, production of cannabis at a single licensed premises provided that the person shall not possess more than 200 total mature cannabis plants at any one time. Two, the manufacturing of cannabis products. Three, sales and transportation of only cannabis products produced or manufactured by that person. Four, operation of only one retail establishment. And five, it's the, you know, the transportation, the couriers of cannabis products to patients, primary carriers, reciprocal participants, or directly to consumers. This definition of a microbusiness, cannabis microbusiness, is allowed by right under a T2. You know, so I want the commission to keep that in mind, that, you know, if the SUP gets approved or gets denied, or gets approved with conditions, you know, whatever the outcome is, that the applicant still has a right to pursue a cannabis microbusiness establishment under these parameters. Basically, the main one being that he's only capped at 200 mature plants, and he's only able to manufacture products of his own establishment. You know, he can bring in products from anywhere else. He can't manufacture for anybody else. It's just for his own establishment. The main one, like I said, being that he's capped at 200 total mature plants. But he's still allowed to do retail. He's still allowed to do the manufacturing and the sale and the production. But the main one being that he's capped at 200 mature plants. So I want, you know, I wanted to lay that out because that is also an option that's available to the applicant by right. But the case as presented, like I said, I mean, the main ones are going to be condition number one and condition number two, where we're just limiting him to cannabis production with no retail sales and no clients on the property. With that said, that's the end of my PowerPoint. We do stand for questions. I do have other members of the county here that are also willing to stand for questions as well.
I have a question, Mr. Casillas. Do we know how wide Gardner Road is?
We saw in the aerials that they were pretty, pretty, that it is a county-maintained road. I didn't physically go out there and measure the paved portion of Gardner Road, but it's at least, you know, per our information that we have available, it's 50 feet wide.
50 feet wide?
And then we'll see, you'll see the the right-of-way, the right-of-way, not the road itself, just the right-of-way.
Clear the courtroom, okay?
But I know that the applicant has pictures of vehicles going along the road, and they'll be showing those so you can see, you know, what the actual, you know, what in reality, you know, what it holds, so.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff?
So, Albert, if we do the conditional approval, and we give him the right to do the 1,000 mature plants, could he then go ahead and open a microbusiness in addition to that?
If, um, we would have to look at it a little bit more closely. But, you know, my, the way I'm interpreting the code, it's either one or the other. You know, it's not going to be both on the property. So, you know, like I said, depending on the outcome of this case, you know, if he gets conditional approval, you know, the applicant will have to make a choice of whether or not, you know, the, a production facility, you know, of up to 1,000 mature plants is going to be more beneficial for him than operating a microbusiness.
But he doesn't need our approval for the microbusiness. That's by right.
That's by right.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes.
Oh, and just a quick reminder, I forgot at the beginning, anyone who has a cell phone or other devices, please silence them.
Good morning.
Morning.
Please raise your right, please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Brandon May, 609 Skyline Elephant View, New Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
And if you can just raise your mic a little, there you go. Thank you.
All right, hopefully that's better. Hi. First off, thank you to the commission for hearing me. Thank you to the public for the comments. I did receive all of the letters that were mailed in, and that definitely helps me implement standard operating procedures to help address some of their concerns. The first letter that I handed out to you guys is going to be from the Assistant City Manager in Truth or Consequences. And that's a letter of recommendation, just stating that I did the same process in Sierra County with a commercial grow neighboring residential neighborhoods, and we've received zero complaints in three years and zero code violations. The next letter is a business associate that used to be the mayor of Williamsburg, and she wrote a letter of recommendation for us. And the last one is a letter from my residential neighbor in Animas Creek in Sierra County, just stating that I'm a good neighbor and that I've always acted as such. And the main concern that I got from reading some of the letters, I think it's important to note that out of the 25 people that were mailed letters, only three of those people responded, immediate neighbors. There was three replies. We received numerous others from Sierra Dorado neighborhood. It looks like the homeowners association was raising some, in my opinion, basis claims about the aircraft safety. And you'll find a letter in there from a resident who's a pilot, who can explain that we're not going to affect the safety of the runway or the air traffic. And so he's licensed with FAA, and he raises some other concerns of safety that could make a bigger difference that haven't been addressed, but everybody's addressing this one now. So that's to kind of refute any implication that we're going to be a danger to the public via air traffic. And finally, the last is a plat map. I know that Albert's initial assessment said that there wasn't a lot of commercial business activities going on, but I just searched on Google real quick, and I located a retail drapery operating next door and a commercial HVAC company operating across the street. And another big concern from people was traffic. And I just wanted to let everybody know, we have a very large parking plan that we're going to direct people in. We're going to make the road wide to kind of bring people off of Gardner onto our road, not to crowd the public right-of-way. And when you exit our proposal, we're going to direct traffic to the right, which is on Gardner, away from any residences, on the way to the highway, 28 Magnut Road, where there is a very large ranch or like holding thing for cattle, and there's like huge piles of manure. And that's another thing, the smell, people are concerned about the smell. A lot of letters address that. And so basically, I can only smell manure most of the time I'm out there, but we're going to have it indoor in the greenhouses, and that's going to control a lot of the smell. The greenhouses are fully constructed with the CID regulations. We'll have certificates of occupancy. No airflow will be directed at night through there, so it'll contain the smell as proposed by the special use permit. And also, I wanted to address the right that we have to operate a microbusiness. And so basically, the way, in my eyes, what it comes down to is the vote for the special use permit really has more to do with the plant count and the type of cultivation that we do. Because as Albert stated, we by right, we can open retail and consumption and cultivation as a microbusiness. But the thing that that does is it caps our cultivation at 200. And so the only thing that would change on my end is that instead of growing 1,000 plants in a greenhouse, I would then grow 200 outdoor in open air, uncontained, so that I can maximize the production and then conduct business accordingly. And so definitely, there's two ways of looking at it. In my opinion, I'd rather grow in the greenhouses as described by the special use permit, but I do also cultivate outdoors in Sierra County, and so that would be on the table at that point. And that's all the comments I have.
Questions for the applicant?
Can you address, can you address any concerns that I'm sure the public will have here today regarding children? Children having access, you know, unwanted individuals, you know, attending the location, privacy, security? Can you just give, I mean, this obviously isn't your first time operating, you know, with a vice license, which I'm assuming you have. Right? So with that, can you just give the general public an idea of what that license entails and all the rigorous requirements necessary for you even to operate prior to even getting a plant in the ground?
Oh, yeah, definitely. It's
Reason being is, there's a lot of, there continues to be a lot of stereotypes and stigmas around the industry. And a lot of that has to do with misconceptions.
Yes.
You know, the differences between legal versus illegal, what goes into legal plants versus illegal plants, how legal products are obtained versus illegal products are obtained. So I'm hoping you can just provide some clarity here for us today. I think that'll help reduce a lot of the comments that may come here shortly after your presentation.
Most definitely, most definitely. And I can address that right now, or I can wait till afterwards.
Please do.
Okay, so, yeah, first off, I'm a family man. My wife, my kids are here. We have plans on moving to the neighborhood. We have plans on moving to the neighborhood, so we're definitely going to keep all security concerns contained. There'll be fences, no access to the property for any underage individuals. We follow all the guidelines by the CCD for security, which is cameras in place, locked doors, cages, all that stuff. And definitely, we've never had any complaints from the CCD. We've been operating since 2022 when they legalized cannabis and we have not had a single infraction. We've never had a break in, we've never had any type, I have three grows and one retail and we've never had any type of criminal element. And it's, it is a lot of stigma that goes on. People think they have, I saw the sign, the way that it reads, like 48 acres, it seems like we're bringing like an amusement park to the neighborhood, but that's not the case at all. This is going to be a small, family-based business, similar to the feel of like a winery where you can go and enjoy the products on site and definitely not like a party atmosphere. We're going to be closing, I think even in Albert's, it said 12:00 AM, 10:00, 10:00 PM is going to be the close on the weekends. We'll only be open for consumption and walk-through retail Friday through Sunday. From Monday through Thursday, we're going to operate solely as a drive-through, where we have plenty of space to direct traffic on and off the property and then route them to McNutt, the highway that's nearby, and steer them away from residences, so. And we're going to post signs for responsible consumption and of course, no minors and stuff like that, definitely.
You actually brought up another question that I have for you regarding your hours. So you do have your hours nine to nine and the consumption 12 to 12. But as you mentioned, you said you'd go down to 10 o'clock.
Yes.
As I'm sure you're aware, the law only requires consumption of cannabis products that are purchased from the facility, so during those hours that you're not going to be selling cannabis, you're only going to...
So I was going to have to check with the CCD and find out if the retail, we'll have two POSs, one for the retail and one for the consumption. And it's my understanding that the, it'll have different prices and serial numbers and inventory at each. So the consumption will be kept separate from the dispensary. And so Monday through Thursday, it will only be people driving on through the drive-through and exiting.
And if you were to move forward with a consumption lounge, are you prepared to follow everything required for you by the Lynn and Erickson Compassionate Use Act?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Can you give us a little rundown of what that is?
On the Lynn and Erickson, so that was the medical law that passed, I think in 2008, making it legal for medical patients in New Mexico to get a product. And it's, it's just the groundwork. So a lot of things changed when commercial, not commercial, recreational consumption, but the Lynn and Erick compassionate care act still is like the groundwork of the rules that we follow. But now it's enforced, instead of the Department of Health, it's now enforced by the RLD via the Cannabis Control Division.
Brandon, a couple of questions. How do you control that they are only consuming your product?
So the, as far as controlling that they're only consuming my product, that would be under the micro business. With a consumption lounge, the way that it's proposed on the special use permit, we will be able to sell other people's product and we can definitely ensure that it's consumed responsibly, but we won't have, we won't be unable to sell other people's product as well.
You will or you will not?
We will, under the special use permit, we will. Under the micro business, we will not.
Okay. And then you commented a while ago on the indoor production. The indoor production, am I to, am I understanding correctly that there's no real limitation on the number of plants, it's just the limitations of your facility?
It would be limited at 1,000 plants if accepted on Albert's conditions. So it would be 1,000 plants as opposed to 200 plants. But see, that's kind of the gray area in New Mexico when it comes to plant count. So in some states, they regulate square footage because that's kind of a better way to enforce the regulations. Because with a square, with a plant count, my plants inside of a greenhouse will be grown in three gallon pots, kind of like the ones that you see at like Walmart and stuff like that. And so we're going for 1,000, like three foot, four foot plants. And so that would be under the special use permit. Under by right, the micro business, what we would then do is we would take 200 outdoor plants and grow them as big as we can in order to make up for that gap in numbers. So instead of growing 1,000 small plants indoor, we would then be growing 200 large plants outdoor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
How, how do you propose to sell the product of 1,000 plants in Doniana County? What's your market?
So I currently have a wholesale operation as well, so it wouldn't be intended to sell all the products at that location. I would also be filling orders for existing clients that I have in Sunland Park, Los Cruces and Chaparral.
So you won't sell outside the county?
I won't sell past the border patrol checkpoint at mile marker 26.
Smart man.
Unless it's grown in Sierra County. My other grow is past the...
So my concern is why, why would you put a retail establishment a half mile off a major arterial on a dirt road? So my concern is the isolation.
Definitely, I hear that. And so we're not going for your typical business plan to where we're trying to line people up out the door at a retail. We're going more of a vineyard feel where people can come more high-end, sit down, enjoy, learn and not really stand in line, get your product and leave.
I'm sorry, Brandon. What's the, what's the percentage of your business that'll be drive-through?
What, can you repeat the question?
Percentage of your business that'll be drive-through?
You know, we don't know at this point what the, really anything, how the business is going to be conceived, how people are going to like it. So I would imagine that only because we're going to be open Monday through Thursday as a drive-through only and then Friday through Sunday as a retail, that it would kind of be 50/50. Because the majority of the time, we're only open for people to visit and leave and then small amount of time for people to enjoy the space.
So you don't know what the impact will be on Gardner Road?
We don't know what the business outcome will be.
Okay.
No, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, how many people do we have signed up?
Fourteen.
Fourteen people, okay. I would ask, I'm going to ask for public input. I'm going to ask you to please limit your comments to two minutes so that we can get it done with 14 people. Albert?
Chair, just before we start the public input, I know that there was a very well-organized public opposition group out there and they, at least when it comes to the first four speakers that were requesting a little bit more additional time. But I'll let the first person to come up here to address that.
Yes, if we could, go ahead.
Chris Clark. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Chris Clark, 4 Cielo Vista Drive in Cielo Dorado Estates.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I've tried to keep this, I've timed myself at four minutes, so I'm going to try to cut out a lot of this material, but I did want to acknowledge the fact that we had a lot of people here that we are representing today and this isn't just a concern citizen on my part. All the people here who are opposed to this, so, and this is on a Thursday morning with spring break and work-related, so I've tried to cut this really short in case somebody else wants to talk. But mine's going to be more general about my experience because I live in Cielo Dorado. I received a letter of notification advising me about the zoning request and change and I noticed that there were several other people in our subdivision. So I contacted our homeowners association president and he got the word out to the entire subdivision, over 100 people. We've had several different meetings about this and at every meeting, we've had dozens of people and they've all been opposed to this zoning request change. We determined that some of the other people notified, we had their names, so we contacted them and these are the areas outside of our subdivision that run along Gardner Road and in that immediate area. They had already formed their own opposition party, so we got together, we've had several meetings since that period of time. We, before there, I think there was a deadline for March the 6th, to turn in all the petition names. We had 137 at last count and I understand since that period of time, we've had over 200 more that have asked to be, and so we've had approximately 350 people that are in opposition to this. My backyard is on the property line, on the southwest property line of Cielo Dorado Estates, which is the northern boundary of this proposed facility. It's basically in my backyard. There's, there's nothing restricting that. We'd have to build a huge wall in order to block any noise, any lights, et cetera.
Ask me to wrap it up, please.
Oh, okay.
For your time. Yeah, I just, I understand all the people that are here, which is why we're setting this time limit, okay? Just, we, you know, we've got all the petitions and we've seen them, so just please, if you could wrap it up, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. I just wanted to stress the fact that this is a very, very rural area that every morning, except this morning, I walk with my dogs, we see bicycle riders, we see joggers, we see lots of other people in this area. It's a completely rural residential area. The other three presenters are going to try to address a little bit more specific issues and concern, but let me close by please asserting to the commission that there is near universal opposition by area residents and property owners to the special use permit application. The proposed zoning change would adversely and irreparably affect the use, enjoyment and value of the homes and properties of hundreds of individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, please, we don't...
Will, before the next speaker comes up, can you put up the two other JPEGs from the other folder? Thank you.
David Hawkins.
David?
Good morning, please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
David Hawkins, 12 Cielo Valrey, Anthony.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing us and our plea for consideration of what is really happening to our community around us. We're concerned about the 300-foot set-off, which was changed and now has removed all of the 17 or so houses on the outside of the area and 108 property owners in Cielo Dorado who also collectively own the property line right up against the north side of that boundary. So having said that, we also have a concern about airport operations and the impact that this facility could have on our airport operations. As many of you know, airports operate for a very strict process for landing and takeoff procedures and one of those procedures is what's called a downwind process, which moves against the wind or with the wind, crosses over and comes back in to land on the runway. Depending upon the air direction, we will either be landing to the southwest directly over top of the proposed facility or landing to the northeast going the other direction. Our concern is obviously landing and takeoffs that overrun the top of the proposed facility. We know that, we feel that there will be high intensity lights and outdoor activities and lights around the entire property that will pose a significant hazard to safety of flight to all pilots operating in the area. Light hazards at night could cause misorientation, confusion and could ultimately result in accidents we all wish to avoid. If the airplane and the pilot is confused and ultimately lands in the wrong location or can't process his landing properly, that will be a significant problem. Another issue which may not have been considered, but in this area, there are issues with lasers and if one of the visitors to this property chooses to play airplane tag with a laser, the pilot could easily be blinded and that would put the aircraft and individuals on the ground and property in significant danger. So we wish that you would consider this consideration. We also have concerns about encroachment in the airport and general FAA regulations. We're studying those to see what impact that might have on both high standards and set-off from the, from the airport. You may hear other issues from individuals who have an opportunity to speak later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Mitch Morgan, 7 Paseo de Paz.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask for a little bit more time. I've got a couple of other things going on that I'd like to address, so I'm going to get through this very, very quickly. Good morning and thank you for the opportunity to address some of our concerns. My family purchased our home in 2004 and we moved down to the valley to improve our quality of life. We wanted less congestion, less traffic and less neighbors. Our home is in a peaceful and quiet subdivision surrounded by like-minded individuals. Contrary to the applicant's responses, they did not notify everyone within the 300 feet of the proposed establishment. Nobody from Acoma Hill Investments sought input, provided transparency, supplied education or explained their intent about this project. All actions executed by the applicants were about their own convenience and did not consider the more than 1,000 property owners this establishment will damage if approved. This includes seven churches and their congregations, two public schools with ages ranging from kindergarten through high school and many daycares and homeschool children. I spoke with Father Francisco of the Pope John Paul II Church on McNutt. He could not believe that the Doniana Planning and Zoning Commission would even consider this proposal. He felt this was an incursion into our neighborhoods and commercial property interests, which would not add significantly to the county coffers. He wondered about using common sense to resolve this. He felt that this was not common, nor did it make much sense. He would not understand why the desire and convenience of one entity could outweigh the wishes of thousands of other property owners in the area. No common sense at all. Allowing this establishment on a very narrow, unimproved roadway with deteriorating surfaces does not contribute to safety of the public or lessen traffic congestion. The roadway narrows to 13 feet, three inches at one point and is not large enough for two vehicles to pass each other at the same time. The current traffic volume is less than 10 vehicles per hour. This will increase by 1,000% with just a modest bit of business attracted to the proposed cannabis store, drive-through and open-air lounge. Cannabis is known to have a very distinctive and strong odor during growth and processing. This odor can travel long distances and be a nuisance to residents in the vicinity. Much of the nearby area will be affected by this odor, complaints about noise from the well irrigation pump already existing on the property already exists. Light pollution and noise from the outdoor seating area are not going to be filtered out, that's going to be up into the atmosphere and that's going to affect other people around in the neighborhood. There are already 38 other dispensaries in the area, none of them north of the Pete Domenici Highway, the closest 1.6 miles away. We want to keep the criminal element out of our neighborhoods. Quality of life is not just an idiom, but it's a real attribute to what many hope to achieve over time. That's what we found when we moved down to the Paseo de Paz neighborhood. However, I learned many years ago that when you live in a neighborhood, you cannot just mind your own business. You need to be considerate of others around you and care about their well-being as well. I care whether the kids in our neighborhood are safe. I care about whether they return safe. I care about whether they return safely at the end of the day. I care about Gael and Santana Gomez, M. Jacob and McKenna Morgan, Ponchito Spencer, Jacob and Jeep Darnell, Martha and Luisa Martinez's grandkids, and our new neighbors, the Soses, with their three children, age 12, 16, and 18. I care about all of them. How much do you care? Not one single life is worth losing because of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Martha Martinez, 1224 Gardner Road.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
And if you don't mind pulling the microphone down.
Oh.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you to express my strong opposition to the proposed zoning for a cannabis consumption lounge, retail, and cultivation site near our residential properties. First and foremost, while I acknowledge the potential economic benefit of such establishments, we must prioritize the well-being and safety of our community. The proximity of the proposed site to our home raises a significant concern about the impact on the quality of our lives. Our neighborhood is a place where families thrive, children play, and neighbors come together. On any given day, there are people riding horses, cyclists, and marathon trainers on those very streets, plus the many families who simply walk their dogs and stroll down these beautiful county roads. Introducing a cannabis consumption lounge, retail, and cultivation site will fundamentally alter the character of our community, leading to increased traffic, noise, and many safety concerns. How will we be protected with an already limited enforcement, law enforcement in our community? Furthermore, the presence of a cannabis consumption lounge will have a negative effect on the property values. Property values in the surrounding areas will decline as potential home buyers may be deterred by the proximity of such establishments. This could lead to a decrease in tax revenue and hinder the growth and development of our community. I urge you to consider an alternative location such as an already zoned commercial or industrial areas, where the impact on residential, on our residential area would be minimized and would allow for the economic benefit of the cannabis business to be realized without compromising the integrity of our community. I respectfully ask that you consider the concerns of the residents and vote against the rezoning proposal. Let us work together to find a solution that balances economic growth with the health, safety, and well-being of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please do more outbursts after comments. Please have some decorum. Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Tracy Navarre, 2 Cielo Lindo.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for giving us the time to speak. I just would like to ask you that, or let you know, my family has lived in that area for, since the beginning of 1999. We love it. It's quiet. The last time I drove down Gardner Road, I passed a family walking their dog. The road is extremely narrow. There, if, there's like a decorum that we have established where we decide who's going to pull over if you meet a car on Gardner Road. It is not a wide road. It's got trees and ditches along the sides. And I just ask that you please consider the well-being of the whole neighborhood and those of us who have lived there for many years versus an investment company who is coming from apparently not, not our area. I'm not opposed to the marijuana businesses in the locations where they're already zoned. I understand it's good for our economy, but I just ask you to please take into consideration those of us who live there versus those of us who would like to come in and make a profit from the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Lorian Canoy, 5 Briar Side Lane.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning. I live less than a mile from the 48 acres, and I just wanted to say that we moved there 15 years ago with our six children, and everyone who moves to the area has dreams, and for most of us, we just wanted space and peace and quiet. And my husband and I pastor a church in Canatío, Upper Valley Vineyard, and our long-term goal in moving there has been to open a respite care space for other ministers to come. And for me, what I see in this is that one of the biggest problems is the smell, because this is, it's okay for us to have dreams, but this particular dream impacts all of us because of the smell and encroaches on our dreams and our ideas of what we want to do with the space. So if I'm bringing someone in to find peace and quiet, and they walk out my back door and they smell marijuana, that affects what I am dreaming of doing in the area, and it affects my children. I do homeschool as well, so, thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Malcolm McGregor. I actually live in 2305 El Paso, Texas. I mean, it's East Mills, El Paso, Texas, but I have property at 13 Cielo del Norte.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Morning, commissioners. I'd like to take this time to let you know that I am opposed to this establishment. It's very obvious that, judging from the presentations, that...
Can you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Yeah, okay. It's very obvious from the presentations that it's going to be a full-fledged business, like it was stated, like a wine tasting for marijuana, and with all that entails. So I am opposed to that. And one of the main reasons I'm opposed to this is if you all allow one business like this to establish in that neighborhood, you'll probably establish another one and another one and another one. You have almost 33 in Sunland Park alone, which is ridiculous. And so that would just completely change the whole character of that neighborhood. And so I'm also a little bit, noticed that the signage that you all put up was kind of small. In El Paso, Texas, they use much larger signs to notify people. That might be something considered next time someone tries to do one of these. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Tom Navarre, number 2 Cielo Lindo in Cielo de Roto.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you for receiving me, commissioners. I'll be very brief. Don't let the MD in any way sway anybody's opinion in here. I am just a regular guy living in Cielo de Roto. I would like to address, however, the fact that for 40 years, I have dealt with pain, alleviation and avoidance of pain in people that truly need it. So I'm not at all opposed to the medical portion of marijuana use. Scientific literature supports it, and as a partisan of that and a teacher of medicine at the Paul Foster School of Medicine, I believe in it and I teach it. So I'm not polarized in that view. However, just as with wine at a wine tasting locale, any mind or physiological altering substance can create difficulty with matters of driving under the influence. Because of the proximity of our community, which is an airport, to the proposed new enterprise, I would forward to you that the possibility of people driving under the influence could mistake a runway for a roadway. And nobody in this room is alien to the recent spate of horrible aircraft accidents that have come across the country. I do believe that it is a real concern where people exiting the proposed establishment would confuse their runway for a driveway or a road. One letter opposed or supported the lack of safety under this one letter, but the balance of everybody who was a pilot can say, "We need to stay safe." I appreciate your consideration. Have a pleasant day.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Father Daniel Cave, 7050 McNutt Road. And yes, I do. I stand here as a former member of the Santa Teresa Volunteer Fire Department as chaplain and honestly, the oldest probie on the department. I am also director of St. Luke's Episcopal Church, which is at the other end of Cielo de Roto on McNutt Road, and as landlord of Cavalry Rest Christian School. The biggest issue I have is the traffic flow pattern out of the consumption lounge, as I understand it, would be turning right on Gardner Road, which would be away from what I would assume to be the proposed direction of the majority of the people who would be coming to the consumption lounge. It would be coming to the consumption lounge from our dear neighbor to the east. Then they would have to travel all the way through New Mexico to get back to their homes after consuming the cannabis product. Gardner Road, McNutt Road, and all of the other roads in that area are dark, very dark at night. There are no lights. And contrary to the 50-foot right-of-way that exists, that includes a significant portion of dirt road that is not maintained well by the county. If you take a look at the pictures that they showed up, Gardner Road, you can barely get two semi-trucks on there as it sits right now. When accidents will happen, because people have consumed, and I have picked up far too many individuals who have drunk and drive, it will negatively impact the community as well as the lives of the people there. And on a dark road at night, where the emergency services responses are limited because of their home bases, this is just a bad idea. So help me God.
Thank you.
Paul Thomason. Good morning. Please state your, raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Paul Thomason, 22 Cielo Vista.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
I've lived in Cielo de Roto for 36 years, and we've had an ongoing airport there. If you fly, and you fly at night, you don't need lights at the end of the runway or off the runway to confuse you about where you are, to blind you. We have some people that are certified to fly with night vision. Lights blind people flying night vision. So there's an, in spite of some of the letters you've gotten, there is a danger to pilots flying in that community. I went out and measured that road, Gardner Road, and the wide, at the narrowest point, it's less than 15 feet wide. And as some others have said, if you're driving on Gardner Road, you have to watch the traffic going ahead, because one of you has to pull over, because you can't stay on the pavement and drive that road. We don't need this facility in our community, and they don't need it. You know, there's lots of places they could put that facility that has better access. Growing marijuana in a greenhouse technically is agriculture, but so is a slaughterhouse, and we don't want a slaughterhouse there either. So the facility does not fit the community, and I would appreciate it if you would oppose it. Thank you.
Good morning. Please...
Good morning. Keith Alexander, 1197 Ungander.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth, is the truth under penalty of law?
True.
Thank you.
Well, I just, I didn't know I was going to be here and everything, but it bothered me, because when I was younger and everything like that, and I saw people drinking, taking marijuana and everything like that, and it lost a lot of people. I talked to, that's the problem, I didn't like it, is I didn't, I've never done anything like that, and I just, all I can say is, I just don't like what they're doing. So all I can say is, nah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Gerald Travis Hatch, 12 Eagle, Double Eagle Road, Anthony, New Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning, committee. Thank you for listening to my comments. Couple of points I would like to talk about and address with you today. This is not about suppressing opportunity. This is about mitigating risk. In the area, Gardner Road, as many have stated, is not well-maintained. Crawford Road is a dirt road, and it poses a lot of risk, which is opposite of mitigating risk. It increases risk for tragedy to happen, for children on bicycles that live in the community, for trail-riding businesses that are in the community that have horses that ride along that area. You increase the risk of some fatality, some injury and harm to livestock, people, community, and property. As the, as this business is proposing and has stated, there are other businesses in the area, which is true, but these businesses export their products. This particular business attracts and brings in their customer base, which also goes opposite of mitigating risk. Therefore, by bringing in these, these types of clients, you bring in double the risk of traffic, probably more so than just doubling, and all the other points that they have talked about. It is a fallacy and a straw man point to treat this as a wine tasting facility. I guarantee, and there are many that probably are not fooled by the fact that this proposed business will not turn away anybody that comes in to consume, high-class or middle-class or low-class. All of them will be accepted to spend money. Also has a big, it will also have long-term, an impact on housing markets. If someone wants to sell their market, they'll decrease the value. It'll be a harder sell. So selling homes in the future for those who would like to sell their property will take a decrease. This will not increase. In close... In closing, I ask you to please reconsider or consider not passing this proposed rezoning so that all those who stand nothing to gain by this can maintain their quality of life and their property and stay out of harms way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jude Martinez, 4001 Pacific Loop, Los Angeles.
You need to pull that mic way down.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dear planning and zoning members, my name is Jude Martinez. I am a Doñana County resident. My abuelita and papa live next door to this proposed area of rope. I would ask that you consider that our family lives and uses the home intergenerationally. A store such as this would impact the safety and quality of life of all of our family. Lastly, I ask that you protect my family's rural home investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record. You can lift the mic.
Luis Soriano, 977 Gardner.
Do you affirm, do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm probably going on a limb here and I'm probably going to get in trouble with my Catholic priest on Saint John Paul II. I just want the commission to please consider that Mr. May is, he's familiar with the business and I'm not sure if it's good or bad. And I just want to tell the residents of Cielo, if you consider that mostly opposition is from the residents of Cielo Dorado, if you eliminate that, how many, I have four neighbors, I have cattle and I have horses, and I don't know if, if Mr. Sam or Mr. Jimmy or Mr. Garcia are for it or against it. I want to take into consideration the people that are not in opposite, against it, not living in Cielo Dorado because I can tell you that my horses get startled from your airplanes flying overhead. And Mr. May is again putting a nice proposal into the table. I don't know what kind of business he's going to bring. And Gardner, I've never had to pull over to let the other car coming inward. And yes, we're going to have problems from people from Texas coming in, but I just spoke to a sheriff from El Paso and he said, real estate for sale, dispensary, I'm against it for consumption and hanging out. I don't know. It might be, it might be good. And again, my priest wanted us to sign against it and I just don't know. I've been married for 45 years and my wife is against it and I live there and I enjoy living there and I see the people riding on bikes and I see the people riding on horses and I do the same thing. And I just went through it and Cielo Dorado sits right behind us, the backyard for this, for this, for this, what Mr. May is proposing, but please take everything into consideration what he's saying and hopefully my property value goes up instead of down because of this business. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no further comments that signed up.
We were given an opportunity to sign up.
It was, it was stated at the beginning of the meeting, but if you would like to sign
There are others who need to speak, please sign up now. Okay, this is the last call to sign up. We have seven people and those are the ones we will hear from.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Dearman, 6558 McNutt Road, Anthony, New Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I would just like to say I live right up the road and around the corner of where the proposed exit is, 6558 McNutt Road. In the last, my family's been there for three generations. In the last five years, we've replaced fencing on 6558 McNutt from cars going off the road hitting it from a lack of lights, no under the influence, no sign of anything, you know, other than that. I am constantly hooking up a winch and four by four to pull people out of the easement on my property. I have no problem doing so. I had to do it with my Walmart grocery delivery last week. Would have been faster to go to the store. My point being, I drive and live on these roads. I walk these roads every day. I walk exactly by the proposed development. I drive a 1997 F-350. I will tell you right now, I also have a Mini Cooper. Both vehicles have to be pulled off to the side of the road for McNutt and Gardner, or for Gardner. It is a county maintained road. I've gone down there with cold pack to fix potholes myself. Why? Because I don't want to replace the shocks in my vehicle. You're going to add more vehicle and traffic flow to a road that already can't handle it without proper maintenance. Everyone else who's opposed to this is obviously, hey, try again in five years, might have a different result. I'm 34 years old. I'm not going anywhere. This is family land. I, I'm opposed to this. And I moved from Colorado and was pro marijuana and helped legalization and helped cultivate grows and build HVAC for grows. I don't like it here because it's not the right place. If the road was taken care of and I had more faith in our county to do that, maybe a different aspect, but right now it's going to be people like us pulling people out and dealing with, under the influence vehicular accidents. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Backus, 1305 Gardner.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
I live at 1305 Gardner. That's just across the street from where they're going to be putting it. So it's south of where they're going to be putting it. I walk on Gardner almost every day. I don't know what these people are smoking, but it is not wide. Anybody that says that two cars can go by there are not true. When I'm walking my dog, if a cars are coming and especially if they're going to be close, I've got to go down the shoulder and get into that field on the other side, almost get into the ditch to let the car pass and my dog be safe. This is not a good place for it. This is a residential community. Why would we want to put a place like that there? There are other places for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ken Bailey. I live at Nine Breyerside.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to speak to you all. Thank you for listening to all of our concerns. I'm going to approach this in a couple of ways, but first I want to talk about the water consumption. We live on well systems out there and my wife and I have been out there for 24 years. My father, who's a professor emeritus from Mexico State, Alton Bailey. We farmed a lot of that land out there when I was a young boy growing up. So it's kind of sad to see some of that be changed for this purpose or the concept of entertaining this particular venue for this. But going back to the water system itself and relying on our irrigations that we get yearly in the summer months and how we get our water that comes through our wells, the impact that that will have on the aqueducts, the amount of water that has to go into these plants, six to eight gallons per plant. And I'm not, I'm not positive that's per day, but at least that amount of water. That's a large amount that's going to affect everyone in this community and I mean in practice in an adverse way. Secondly, my wife and I are former educators. Between the two of us, we have spent 76 years in education. My wife is 32 years in the state of New Mexico, retired. I recently retired out in New Mexico, 44 years between New Mexico and Texas. Now, in that being said, as former educators, I can tell you what I've witnessed as an administrator and as teachers, and I'm concerned about Santa Teresa High School to the south, Gadsden High School to the north, the elementary schools and middle schools just right there in proximity, Garcia Elementary, Santa Teresa and some other elementary schools. Now, that being said as well, they talk about, okay, this is for adults and let's talk about truth here. This is not just about adults having access because it will, may come from the adults, but as an administrator and someone who has dealt with all kinds of young people who've had so many problems today, and this is what we're seeing throughout this nation, and this is not going to help them in any way. They're coming to class, they're under the influence all the time. It's almost impossible for teachers to teach. And we see the reduction in number of teachers because they say it's a lack of classroom management. You don't even have administrators that support teachers today. And it's unfortunate that this is what our society has come to today. This is more important than our youth and than our kids. And I totally am totally opposed to this as an educator, not the fact what I said about the element of the water system to everyone in that community. This is a rural community and this is where we have made our families. So I appreciate your time and your consideration, all of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Gutierrez, 1246 Borderland Road, Anthony, New Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ralph Gutierrez and I live at 1246 Borderland Road and I wanted to discuss something that I haven't heard the word used. It's called impairment. There's a reason for marijuana and alcohol being not legalized or it's legalized, but it's, it does cause people to get impaired when they're driving on their vehicles. And I don't know if there's any statistics that are available, but nobody has said anything about the number fatalities that have been, that have arisen from, from the use of marijuana in the state of New Mexico. New Mexico does not have a stellar reputation for, for highway fatalities or for a lack of highway fatalities. It ranks fairly high up there and the use of marijuana would only contribute to that I'm feeling. So, you know, I can remember back in the high school, my high school days, this was back in the early seventies, that one joint of marijuana could get you one year in prison. And it does, there are reasons. I, I used to work for the U.S. Department of Transportation and I dealt with the railroad industry investigating employee fatalities, grade crossing accidents, derailments, things of this nature. And there are reasons that the federal railroad administration, the federal aviation, federal highway administration have very strict limits on the use of marijuana or cannabis. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Sharon Owen, 1400 Gardner Road.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to speak because we are not from Cielo Dorado. My parents-in-law built our home, a New Mexico territorial home in 1958 on the corner of McNutt and Gardner. Until this morning, I had no idea that the highly recommended Egress route would be right by our driveway in our house. We already have trouble with people using our driveway as a turnaround and tossing trash between there and McNutt. When my parents-in-law built the home, it was just a little dairy down the road. Now it's a stockyard and yes, they manufacture manure. The smell is not that bad, believe it or not, depends on the wind. But I just want to say, we've been, we've been there a long time before Cielo Dorado was even thought of, before the homes in Paseo de Paz, and it was a beautiful, remote, lovely area and we would encourage you to please vote to maintain that. Everything these people have said is true. The road is very, very narrow and I had no idea that we were going to be right there where this is going to be zipping by us all the time if this is instituted. So please hear us out as concerned citizens and help us maintain the neighborhood that we, that we are. And I just wanted to say, you know, we're not all Cielo Dorado. We are from all over and we are the oldest residents out there, us and the Dearmans, wherever you are, we were next door to them. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I think I'm last.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
John Dorsak, 24 Cielo Dorado, Anthony.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Real quick, due to the proximity of the Gardner property to the airport Cielo Dorado, there are federal regulations that apply to land, land use that haven't been addressed. Specifically, oh, Code of Federal Regulations Title 14, Chapter I, Subchapter E, Part 77 that outlines standards and requirements for determining obstruction to air navigation and establishes a need to provide to the FAA notice of proposed constructions near airports. And that's in order to calculate departure, arrival, obstacle clearances and emergency flight path angles and slopes. Additionally, Code of Federal Regulations Title 14, Chapter I, Subchapter I, Part 150, which identifies land uses which are normally compatible with various levels of exposure to aircraft noise by individuals and governance, noise, exposure, safety of individuals on airport property and under airport traffic patterns. The Gardner properties directly under the flight path, rival departure and landing traffic pattern at altitudes that vary and there's multiple types of aircraft that operate out of the, years ago, I flew what was considered a large aircraft corporately and landed and departed from the Cielo Dorado Airport. It's a very complicated issue, clearances, terrain clearances, engine out procedures and any construction in that area, particularly vertically, but additionally, directly down the center line of the runway should be taken to account. should be taken into account, and it's addressed in these two federal regulations. And the last thing I'd like to remind of the board is, the intent of the Doniana County United Development Code to create an orderly, harmonious development, and encourage the location of compatible land uses, and through regulation, protect county residents from possible hazardous effects of uncontrolled land uses with the understanding that standards and regulations are necessary to protect the environment and the property of others. It's from the county that I know you're all familiar with. Thank you very much, and I hope I'm the last one.
Thank you.
Maggie Alatore, we have three additional, and it's Maggie Alatore.
Hello, my name is Maggie Alatore.
Can you state your address for the record, please?
668 Sierra de Paz Lane, in Anthony, New Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today's a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I live right across the street from this huge production. I mean, 48 acres is not a small production. My husband and I are retired, and I enjoy our idyllic country life. It's very quiet, we have great neighbors, and it is a country life, that's why we moved there. But now I feel this tremendous sort of crisis and sense of loss, that we are losing that kind of lifestyle. From, you know, every single day, we walk our dogs. I've had three pets already run over, because that road of Gardner is actually very narrow. I don't think it's more than 20 feet. I walk 15 steps and I'm right there. So, when I open my doors and my windows in the morning, I smell the fresh air, look at our pecans. We have an asequia, we have pecans, and I love to walk around the pecan orchards and this magnificent country life. And now what do we have? Now we have this big old marijuana production, thank you, that, and I don't wanna be surrounded by a bunch of potheads, I'm sorry, I don't mean this, this is disrespectful. That's the way they used to call them, okay? These people had been, I know, family members, they were incarcerated for days and months for just possessing less than one gram of marijuana, and they were in jail, well, now they don't have to go to jail. They just can come right across the street from my house. Do I want those people near my house? No, I don't. I want to continue, this is, nature has to do with our culture, with the values that we hold, with our lifestyle. And not to mention, like dear Father Daniel said, about the risks also. Because there are a lot of agricultural machines that are always running by, sometimes people, you know, their cars are going extremely fast, and I just, like I said, I don't want to be exposed when I open my doors to all the lights, so I'm sure they're gonna be very bright, the sound of those pumps are very, very noisy, okay? And not to mention the water impact. And that's all I want to say, and I'm just very upset, and I definitely, I want to oppose this.
Thank you.
Shawnee Hatch. Good morning, please state your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Shawnee Hatch, 1069 Gardner Road.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today's a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. May, I noticed in your speech that you kept saying you're gonna direct traffic to go right onto McNutt, right?
Ma'am, please address the commission, not the person.
You're gonna direct traffic to go right onto McNutt. How are you going to ensure that everybody who leaves this facility turns right? Are we gonna have somebody out there directing traffic to make sure that they actually turn and go out to McNutt? Or are they gonna go the other way, down Gardner Road, where I have five young children, 14 to two years old, who are on bikes, riding horses, constantly down Crawford Road, that are out there enjoying their life? We came out to that area because it was rural, and we were away from people, not everybody, but we had enough land that we weren't cookie-cutter houses, and our kids can enjoy a lifestyle of riding horses and being free and not stuck in the city. Now, I'm all for families creating their own business, they have three or two children that I can see. I just question, would you want this next to your kids as they're out riding their bikes, or with their friends, and having the risk of these people who are coming into a business not paying attention, maybe on their phones, while intoxicated? It's not safe for the community, it's not safe for our children, and putting them at a risk. And like people have mentioned, the roads are not wide, there's not a lot of lighting, there's going to be people there that we are not sure of their background. It could be high-end people, it could be down to middle-class or lower-class. We don't want this in our community. We came out there to live our dream with our five beautiful kids, and having this impact them, and the risk of them being out on their bikes and possibly not be seen, is scary as parents. So we ask that you please shut this down and do not vote for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The last person is Jonathan Murphy. Good morning, please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Jonathan Murphy, I live at 6767 West Side Drive.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today's a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time, I just wanted to share. So I've been in law enforcement for 12 years and still currently working as a police officer. I have nothing against the growth of the marijuana, I understand, you know, trying to progress, trying to do, to provide for your family. My concern is, and I'll compare it to a bar. We know if a bar is open, there's nothing illegal, there's nothing wrong with that, but I have seen firsthand the potential of drunk drivers coming from a bar. Everyone that goes to a bar doesn't mean that they're leaving drunk, there's a higher potential for that. I've seen responded to fights at bars, shootings, where there's been death. And the potential, the risk that is there, the selling of the marijuana, it's not illegal, but my concern is a safety for those that live in the area. I'm okay with it being open somewhere else, but would we want a bar opened up in our neighborhood? Would we take the risks if there was a bar opened up in our neighborhood? And I don't think the risks are worth it with the children that live there. And that's coming just from personal experience, seeing what can come from a place where you can leave impaired, with the potential of leaving impaired. I just don't think it's worth the risk to have that establishment in a neighborhood. It'd be better suited somewhere, not residential, but somewhere commercial. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. That's it, thank you very much, people, Albert.
Commissioner, I just wanted to know that the applicant has requested a chance to address some of those comments that we just heard. Also, in the audience, I do want to acknowledge that we do have Captain Herrera here from the Fire Marshal's Office, if you have any questions. We also have William Provence, our airport manager, here as well, if you guys have any questions for him.
And Albert, at some point, I would like you to clarify for me, under the current zoning, what does Mr. May have a right to do on his property, as far as cannabis is concerned?
Well, can we get my PowerPoint back on? Thank you. Commissioner, in your packet I included the definition of a cannabis microbusiness, but basically, it's everything that's outlined under number three, right here.
Number three?
Yes.
So, he can put in a microbusiness with the 200 plants, he can also put in the retail business?
Yes, and I am gonna make one point of clarification. On our land use matrix, we don't have a use for cannabis consumption, because in the code, you know, it's already written in there that a cannabis consumption lounge is allowed wherever retail is allowed.
So, if we were to not approve this, he would still have a right to put in this microbusiness, put in the retail side, and as long as he stayed with the 200 plants and complied with all the regulations?
That is correct. One of the major differences too, is that he can bring in products from any other cannabis establishment. Everything has to be his own.
But we could, but if we allowed the larger production under closed environment, we could stipulate that nothing else?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, the problem is, as I understand this, if we allow him to do the cannabis production facility with 1,000 plants, he could turn around because of the T2, and put in a microbusiness in addition to that. There's nothing preventing him from doing that.
There's nothing preventing him from doing that, but I think, and I would have to look more into the code, it wouldn't be allowed on the same property. He would probably have to subdivide the property, create his own separate parcel. There's other stipulations in there about retail having to be at a certain distance from other retail as well, and that's 300 feet, so there are some minimal standards.
But that wouldn't be, the production facility wouldn't be retail.
But it would still entail, it would still entail a retail facility. So basically, we can't have somebody having a microbusiness back next to each other, back to back to back to back to back.
Okay.
And like I said, the applicant wants to give a closing statement, and I also have the airport manager here, and somebody from the Fire Marshal's Office.
Okay, thank you, Albert. I have further comments from the commission. Entertain a motion.
I'd actually like to hear from the applicant, as mentioned, to address a few of the issues prior to voting, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you all for your comments. I just wanted to come up and address what some of the people were saying, specifically some of the more unsubstantiated claims. So, first off, in my notes, I wrote down that there could be drivers ending up on the runway. I just wanna stress that Sierra Dorado is a gated community with an entrance two miles away from our place. There's irrigation ditches separating us and gates, and we will also fence off our area. So a car would have to drive through a fence, through an irrigation ditch, through another fence, across a property to get onto the runway. So that, I don't think is really a danger of happening. Another thing that was brought up was, one gentleman said that traffic's gonna go up 1,000 times. I know that you were asking me what I thought my, what I based that on, I don't have any facts, so I can't speak on it, but I don't think 1,000 times the traffic is substantiated as well. I wanna also address some of the air safety concerns. I know the gentleman here had some rule books out here. I'm not familiar with them, but I know a lot of it, that from what I heard him read, was saying on airport property, and we're not on airport property. You can refer to the letter that I handed out to everybody from Herb Galliart, a pilot who's registered with the FAA, refuting those claims, and just ensure everybody that we will check with the CID and the FAA and everything before building anything out there, and to make sure that we're in compliance and we're not gonna cause any public safety concerns over air traffic. Water usage, one gentleman said that it's an absorbent amount of water usage on that property. We currently have 259 acre-feet of water, and that is roughly 85 million gallons per year, and we're gonna use 125,000 gallons. So we're not gonna be using anybody's water, none of the neighbors' well is gonna be affected. We use drip irrigation, we're extremely conscious about water usage and any type of runoff. It's all recycled, so there will be zero water issues, zero water impact. Also, another lady is thinking that we're gonna have a 48-acre grow, and that's ginormous. It's gonna be, whether, the size of the grow is actually gonna be dictated on the vote. So if it's voted for, the size of the grow is gonna be in three greenhouses. If it's voted against, the size of the grow is gonna be as big as I can make 200 plants. And that is gonna be an eyesore, it is gonna smell bad, and it'll be out in the open, as opposed to controlled in the environment, as the special use application states. Another thing, another woman asked, would I want my children there? I actually have an acre of land on the 50 acres that I'm gonna be building a house and moving my family, two kids, three in August. We will be there, and I'm not gonna have a director directing traffic, but our road will be, the exit will be a right turn only, with shoulders directing to where there's no, there will be no left turns. So, we'll keep everybody in New Mexico, we'll direct them towards the high-traffic areas, like the highways, and away from people's houses, including my own children. And also, the gentleman who came up here with impaired driver statistics, it's actually the opposite with cannabis. When states legalize cannabis, then DUIs and impaired driver incidents go down. And that's also what New Mexico's been experiencing. So it will not be like having a bar next door. And finally, I just wanna close with respectfully, thank you all for coming out here, thank you for spending your time. This is not a vote to whether or not we're gonna put the retail consumption and grow in, because by right, we can do that. This'll be whether we're gonna grow 200 mature plants outdoor, as big as we can, or in a controlled environment in three small greenhouses. Thank you.
Mr. May, so are you saying that if you have the controlled indoor environment, you will not plant the outdoor?
Correct.
So, the question I have is, do you know, if you put in the three greenhouses, how much traffic would that generate?
The greenhouses won't generate, they won't generate any traffic. It'll be closed off separately gated area from the consumption in the retail, with employees only.
So, do you have a preference? A wholesale operation only, that's what the recommendation is, or a microbusiness?
So I would go forward with the microbusiness. What I would like to do is approval of the way that I intended. That, in my opinion, that is the best look for the whole entire community and the neighborhood, 'cause I can keep it small, I can keep it controlled, and contain the smell and the airflow. And I would not be interested in solely doing the 1,000 mature plants. I would need the retail and the consumption as well, because I already have grows with well more than 1,000 plants up north, so I don't really need to grow more plants, I'm looking for establishment.
Mr. May, are you set on putting those greenhouses at that location? My concern is the lighting, the control you may have on the lighting, and how it would affect pilots.
So we do grow in light deprivation greenhouses, and they're fully engineered for zero light exit or entrance. So there will never be any light pollution.
Security lighting, sir.
So the security lighting will be just whatever the county has us put up for the parking areas. And so, anything else will just be motion-censored lights and cameras. Nothing obtrusive.
Anything else, Commissioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I also have a request from Mr. Mitch Morgan, was one of the initial speakers, to just give a final statement on behalf of the public.
I just wanted to address or clarify some of the points that Mr. May made. I'm the one who mentioned 1,000% increase. That's taking the traffic from 10 cars per hour to 100 cars per hour, which is not out of the realm of actually doing anything. So, that's the big thing. So, a 10x increase in vehicles is a 1,000% increase.
Let me ask you a question, how do you justify that?
I don't justify it, I'm just looking at the cannabis lounge and his plants. He can't justify anything that he's doing, he doesn't even know, and he admitted that.
No, I'm asking you where you're getting the number of automobiles.
I walk that, I walk that street daily.
I understand.
And because no traffic.
Excuse me, you're saying it's gonna go from 10 cars to 100 cars?
Correct.
How do you know that? That's what I'm asking.
I don't know that.
That's all I wanna know.
Yeah, hypothetically, if it were to increase from 10 to 100, that would be 1,000% increase. And that's where that 1,000 came up, not 1,000 times. The second thing was, on the water consumption, we are limited to four inches this year in New Mexico. So it's not a matter of feet, it's actually four inches. And that's put out by EBID, and that is a course of common record. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chair, and then just, just one point of, of clarification, you know, from, from staff. Whether or not the applicant can grow 200 mature plants or 1,000 mature plants, uh, there's something in the code that says that they have to be indoors or outdoors. They both can be either indoors or outdoors as well. So i- i- if it's 200 mature plants, you know, th- those can also be within the greenhouse as well.
Mr. May?
So just to respond on that, the, um, the 200 plants could be grown in, in greenhouse, but it wouldn't be, because I couldn't grow 200 small plants in a greenhouse and get the same production as I would of 200 plants taller than myself outside. So, uh, just as a preference, we will grow in greenhouses with a special use permit, and we will grow outside without. So it's, it'd be up to the cultivator, and that would be our choice, just to be clear. Oh, and also it's groundwater. Well, you can't, the sequoia water is controlled federally, so what he's talking about, four inches, is from like the EBID. We're pumping it up from the ground, which we have 258 acre feet per year.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna rec-, uh, uh, make a motion for conditional approval of case number SU 25-002, as stated by staff.
With conditions as stated by staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Zerniak, second by Commissioner Jimenez. Call the roll, please, I mean.
Commissioner Orunga?
No, the reason is, uh, Gardner Road is way too, uh, narrow, and, uh, it will not, uh, promote health, safety, and general welfare of the residents nearby.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
No, and the reasons I'm voting no are, uh, the statement in the comprehensive plan that says developing areas with existing infrastructure and where existing businesses are located. I don't think the infrastructure currently supports that kind of establishment. Uh, we also don't know what the traffic impact is, uh, so that's an unknown. Uh, it could be high, it could be low, we just don't know. It is a rural area, uh, it's a residential area. I'm not sure that, um, a Gardner Road could handle a- any, any increase in traffic and be safe. I'm also concerned about the isolation of the location. It's al- almost a half mile off of McNutt, and finally, neighborhood opposition.
Chair Sarge?
I'm also gonna vote no, basically for the reason, same reasons as Vice Chair Zerniak, and because of the, uh, community involvement.
Please maintain order.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am, so, moving on.
Is it denied?
Can we take a quick break?
Well, if it's, if it's, it's a time, oh, it's a no vote, no, nevermind, I don't know how to count.
Take a quick five-minute break, please. What's the next case? Thank you.
Can I get everybody to start making their way out, if you're not in this next case?
Okay. Next case is V 25-002, variance to a setback.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Valencia, 3450 Motel Boulevard. 845 Motel Boulevard, sorry.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know why I said 345, I apologize. Don't know where I'm at. Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. For our next case, uh, case 5B, variance for 25-002. The owner, Enrique Canaba, is here. The lo-, location for this variance is at 5065 Comanche Trail, northwest of Las Cruces, and it's zoned a D2L. Um, the variance is for, um, a request is for the variance of the side yard setback of three foot, three inches where five foot is required. Here's a location map, this is the neighborhood, right here is, uh, Comanche Trail, and here's Mr., here's the applicant's property right there at the end. He's right before the cul-de-sac. And here it is again. The property is a half-acre parcel located in D2L zone, and it currently has an approximate four, four-foot rock wall around the entire property. The surrounding area is rural with the large parcels of, uh, developed single-family residential uses. The rock wall was built in '06, right on the property line by the previous owner, and access to Comanche Trail to the property is from Comanche Trail, 60-foot right away. Here is the subject parcel, and here is the location of the, uh, structure that we're talking about. All zoned D2L. The applicant purchased the property in September 2023. The rock wall fence was already in construction in '06. There was a, the, the shed, the shed that the applicant built was for the sole purpose of personal storage and for hobby space for woodworking and his crafts. Client says, being outside of the city limits, he thought, he assumed he did not have any kind of restriction on size or where it could be placed. The rear of the building, well, he calls it the rear, which is actually the side, the rear of the building is three foot, three inches from the rock wall, which appeared to have sufficient space, this is from the client, between the building and rock wall in case of an emergency that would require getting behind the building. He believed it would not cause any public health or environmental hazards to human life or wildlife. This is a sketch of his home, and the 24-by-30, um, shed is right here. And what's in discussion, the variance is a three-foot-three here from the rock wall fence. 29 letters were sent out to the surrounding area. Um, it was also posted in the paper, and there was one letter in opposition received for this variance. Here are the public hearing signs posted on the property on both sides of the residence, and the structure in the back is what we're looking at. This is the area of notifications. And here are the front gates, um, but also just to show you where it's situated, the shed is, as I said, again, three foot, three from the side of the rock wall fence, um, and it's located right there. Looking toward the cul-de-sac, meaning toward the subject property, it's right here to the right, and then looking back up toward Webb Road, very large right of the way, and, um, here is the neighbor, which actually has issues with the, with the rock wall fence, I'm sorry, with the, uh, building location. Zoomed in to the rock wall fence here at the property line, and then on the opposite side, you can actually tell that the, the roof is pitched, on the opposite side of the, of the building, uh, where the rock wall fence, there's nothing there, and that's the neighbor's property. This is the three-foot-three, a little bit closer. Very well-built building, very nice, 24 by 30. And these are the applicant's construction drawings that he sent in to show how he built it himself. Looking at the applicable plans, policies, and criteria for the variance, we're also looking at the agency comments. These are the comments from, uh, engineering, zonings, and there's actually a, a, a case with zoning codes, because of the anonymous complaint that was received last year pertaining to this building, and this was the complaint. Basically, the slope overhanging to the neighbor's yard, and he's, the, the anonymous complaint is worried about the rain runoff. No issues from flood. Building Services did say that if this was still approved, at least the, the setback was approved, that he would require the shed to have a one-hour fire rating added to that. The Fire Marshal had no comments. This variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege. Actually, the applicant states the sole purpose of the building is for the personal storage and to have space for the personal hobby, woodwork, and crafts. This request will constitute a grant of special privilege, since no other property has received a variance in the neighborhood. Um, this variance will be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, and could be materially injurious to the properties, uh, or improvements in the area of notice due to the possible water flow from pitched roof. Um, the garage overhang may spill out onto the side of the fence during a rain event, uh, which may disturb the rock wall foundation. I think that's actually the, uh, the, the care right there is, is the material injury to the property. This property does not meet the standard, um, of the physical hardship. The physical hardship was created by the applicant, as there is plenty of room on his property to meet those setbacks. Um, upholding this purpose and intent of the chapter of the Public Safety and Welfare Pool, this variance would not constitute protection to the applicant and neighbor due to possible drainage issues on the rock wall foundation. The applicant failed to pull county, pull county building permits for his garage structure, and has also located accessory structure within the five-foot setback for a D2L zone. Within our staff findings, property is outside of any incorporated municipal area, so we can, P&amp;Z can hear this case. Um, uh, the building is a 24-foot-by-30-foot building, it's three foot, three inches from the side yard property line, where five foot is the minimum requirement. The public notice requirements have been issued and met by the, by the 305, 35207 variance, and, um, the variance rec- request does not meet the findings of Dojana County UDC. As amended, the variance will constitute a grant of special privi- privilege that there is no other structure in the neighborhood is within five-foot building setback, the possible materially in, material injury to the rock wall foundation and the partial drainage onto the adjacent property as well. There is not a physical hardship resulting from the shape or the size of the parcel or from existing structures, but, uh, or from topog- topographic or physical conditions on the site or in the area of notice, and the hardship here is self-imposed by the applicant. Um, the variance does not uphold the purpose and intent of this chapter. Public safety and welfare are secured and substantial justice done. Granting this variance will not uphold the spirit of the intent of the UDC. Create an orderly, harmonious, economically sound development in order to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents in the county. So therefore, based on our facts of, uh, findings of fact, staff analysis, and agency comments, staff recommends the denial of the case V 25002 for the variance. But however, if the P&amp;Z wishes to approve, the staff recommends the following conditions. From Building Services, that the shed would have a, a one-hour rating, uh, and reduced, uh, with the reduced setback. Number two, attempts to reduce the impact of the built garage must be made and approv- and approved by Building Services to ensure runoff stops on, stops on the property by providing a drainage gutter on the west side of the building or any other approved system. Also, by obtaining building permits for the accessory structure. Also, the applicant agrees to work closely with Building Services and inspectors to have needed inspections completed for the garage. And lastly, the applicant, uh, will pay a triple fee for all the permits. This concludes, uh, our presentation, and the applicant is here as well to yield any kind of questions, and staff can yield questions as well.
Questions of staff?
Yes. Christopher?
Yes, ma'am.
Who maintains that rock wall?
That would be a question for the property owner even, but I'd know that that property has had that since 2006, so I would assume that the owner would maintain that wall. And I would say the owner would be the person, uh, of the 5065 Comanche Trail, the person who lives at that property, which is the applicant.
The applicant.
Correct.
Okay.
There is a building permit found from 2006 from the person that lived at the, their location, so the property moved with that owner. So therefore, I'm gonna say the applicant.
Okay.
Anyone else? Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Enrique Canaba, 5065 Comanche Trail, Las Cruces, New Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here to address the issue about my neighbor having, uh, I'm here to address the issue about my neighbor having runoff, runoff water from my shed onto the, onto the wall, onto his property. I have pictures that we've taken, we had some rain November of last year, and we'd have no issue with the water running off into his property. If it fell inside my rock wall and drains into the, a ponding area I have on the west side of the, of the property, that's, will contain the water there.
We have evidence here, could you want to push play, Will? And this is during a rain event here, Mr. Canaba recorded this during last week's rain event?
The water runs off west into the ponding area I have in the backside of the house. The ponding area is about roughly twelve feet wide by twenty feet long, and it's about two, two feet wide, uh, deep to hold the water.
Thank you, Will.
The issue that my neighbor has is the runoff from the building onto where it's falling in, you see the picture there, the water run, run into the property. I can prevent that by putting a gutter system to run onto west side, onto the pond, to prevent the water from into his property. It'll never reach his property because it has to be a substantial amount of rain to fall in there. He's afraid that will flood him out, but I don't see how.
I have a question for the applicant. So you're in agreement to doing these requirements that the, the staff has recommended?
Yes.
For approval?
Yes, whatever I have to do to approve, to get it approved, yes, I will do it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Canaba, when was this structure first built?
Last year.
Last year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Further questions of the applicant?
Was this, was this structure built by a contractor, or was that done?
Between me and a subcontractor.
So it was not a licensed contractor?
Uh, no.
So, I'd like to add one condition. I mean, there, there's still water that collects there, and even with a gutter, some of that water is gonna, gonna spill, not spill over, but it's gonna end up on the side of the building. Mr. Canaba, I, I'd like to recommend that we say that you're responsible for any damage to the wall.
Yes.
Okay.
I've always accepted that fact.
Okay.
Now, that's my wall, I'm responsible for it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Take, take a motion, there's no more discussion.
Thank you.
Was there any opposition?
Any opposition? I think so?
Okay.
No. It was one letter, I believe, right?
Yes, the, the letter was from the, the anonymous letter was from the neighbor next door, and no other opposition was, was received for this. There were two phone calls in, in, in support, but that's not taken down because there were phone calls.
You couldn't whack a foot and a half off the back of that building. I make a motion? Just no? To approve the case with the one exception of the, I mean, the addition that the wall be maintained by the applicant if there was any type of damage. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve variance with conditions that the applicant must meet to prevent flooding and maintain the wall. Right?
Are the conditions include staff's recommendations as well, or not?
Yes. Yes, conditions include staff recommendations as well.
Commissioner Oduanga?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zargis?
Yes. Motion passed, variance is passed. Moving ahead, moving on. I don't want to say packet this big again. Next case is Special Use Permit twenty-four dash zero three two, Chaparral Investments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Albert Casillas, eight forty-five North Motel Boulevard.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Did you before?
I think I was catching my breath out there, trying to. Our third case today is gonna be another special use permit, but it's gonna be for a wireless communication facility. Basically, it's gonna be a monopole that's a hundred and twenty feet tall in Chaparral, New Mexico, on Schnerberger Road. The applicant's Matthew Graff, and the property is owned by Chaparral Investments Properties, which is his, his business. Here's the location map, but just kind of, or, or in our south, that's State Line Drive, which, you know, borders Texas. You'll probably have, what is it, McCombs over here to, to the west, so it's kind of like a little bit south, southeast of Chaparral, within the county. And here's an existing, well, the existing area of strong, strong properties. So State Line, Schnerberger Road right here, and this is old Sequoia. I am gonna point out, and we'll see a picture of it, that there is another tower over here to the northeast of the property, that one was approved like back in the eighties. And most of the, you know, the, because I, I've signed off on a couple of building permits for that tower, but they're all just, you know, replacing old equipment, and when you look at the tower, it looks pretty, pretty full already, and a lot of the building permits that we've had on there is just to replace old, old, old equipment. But this is the subject parcel, Schnerberger Road, State Line Drive, they're both county, county-maintained roads. It's about five point seven five acres. The, the property itself, back in the eighties, also had, you know, some type of SUP approval. It was done for cold storage warehouse, it was basically for Shawns Sales Enterprises, that was back in the eighties. Earlier, in the, you know, in, in twenty twenty-two, you know, this was one of the, you know, also first establishments that had applied for a, for manufacturing, transportation, and cultivation of cannabis on, on, under property. So they ended up getting an administrative approval, because that's what, you know, what the code allowed back then, because there was no neighborhood opposition to, to this request. And that was done in SU, in twenty twenty-two. So that they do have an existing cannabis business on site, on, on the five acres, and I'll show you guys some pictures of that. And like I said before, access is from Schnerberger Road. So here, this parcel close up right here, you see the, the existing facility that, that's being used for, for production, manufacturing. It's already fenced off, they have a separate entrance to that facility, and then back here, this is the approximate location of their, their, their monopole, and they do have another separate entrance for, for, for that tower. The reason I'm not showing a, a lease area, you know, like, like in other cases, is because they, they own the, the property, and they're gonna own the tower themselves. Here's the zoning map, so, you know, the, the property's basically T two and T three surrounding it. On their overall site plan, we see the existing cannabis establishment here, and this is the approximate location of the, of the tower. I've, you know, asked the applicant to include, you know, the measurements, because they do have to meet that a hundred and ten percent height setback requirement, so that's basically, that puts them at a hundred and thirty-two feet, and that's where, where, you know, the center of the tower's gonna be located. So there's, there's, there's no need for a variance request to, to setbacks, because they already meet that requirement. And just the, and elevation drawing of the proposed tower. Twenty-nine letters of notification were mailed out, signs were posted on the property, there was no letters or petitions in, in opposition to this request. That's the, the area of notification. And then just the, the next pictures are, you know, what's, what's existing on site, that's the cannabis facility there, and then the tower's basically gonna be behind these container boxes that are there. And then, you know, just, I know Code's made a comment about the container boxes, but after talking with the applicant, that's basically where they're storing all the, you know, the wiring and all the material that they're gonna be using for, for, for the tower. And I'll, I'll address that on, on, under my conditions at the end of the PowerPoint. That's the, the entrance that they have currently, aside from the entrance to, to the cannabis establishment. Additional pictures. This is Schnerberger Road, looking north. South. Across the property, the property's pretty much vacant, and then just further down, you see that existing tower where they're, they've just been doing basically removal and replacing of, of current equipment. So for SUPs and towers, we gotta look at section two oh four and five thirteen. Traffic flows, need for commercial activity, water, potential water sewer needs, all those items are included in your, in your packet. Traffic flows, like I said, I mean, maybe just during construction, there's gonna be an increase in traffic on Schnerberger Road, but after, you know, that, that, that's complete, if approved, then it's only gonna be maintenance vehicles going on site. When we look at the comp plan, to support the, the tower itself, we gotta look at some of the sections or some of the goals that include increasing services to colonias and other rural areas, maintaining public services while keeping them affordable, and continue to support fire, rescue, and emergency services. No water sewer needs are anticipated for the operation of the cell tower. Water sewers are not required, except maybe during construction. No known areas of historical significance or any endangered species. Impacts, like I said before, it's gonna meet the requirements of a hundred and ten percent of its total height for, for setbacks. There's only gonna be a, you know, a small temporary increase in traffic during construction. And, you know, you saw the pictures, there's already protection around the entire perimeter of those five acres. And then also, there was a structural analysis report that was submitted and stated that the tower and its foundation have sufficient capacity to carry the proposed load configuration. And of course, the applicant will work with staff to implement reasonable best management practices for the development on the site. When it comes to our findings, basically, you know, a special use permit is required for any tower that wants to be located in a T two zone. The facility will be engineered to allow for co-location, and it does meet that section of the code that talks about co-location. We also wanna say that it does, you know, staff believes that it does meet the decision or criteria for, for special use permits. In our recommendations, we are recommending conditional approval for this case, that the ground-mounted accessory equipment and tower shall be secured and enclosed with a solid wall or opaque fence, not less than eight feet in height, and that's just for basically the, all the equipment that's at, at the bottom of the tower. The tower be designed to accommodate co-location of other antennas, and we, we saw the pictures that there were all those storage containers out there, that those be removed once the monopole, once the monopole is built. With that, that's the end of our presentation, the applicant is here today, and we stand for questions.
Questions of staff? I just have a question to the applicant. Once the- A minute.
Well, we can let him come up here and get someone's name, then we can ask him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hear from the applicant?
Good morning, please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Matt Growth, and three twenty McCombs Road, Chaparral, New Mexico, eight eight zero eight one.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for seeing me today. So, I'm not exactly, I have a, do you, I'm not, this is my first time up here speaking, so I'm kinda-
Just, just that one question that I had, once the tower is complete and the, the property has been cleaned up, where, where do you plan on taking the storage containers to?
Probably back to our, we have lay-down yards in Chaparral.
Okay. All right, that was my question, thank you. We have your letter, do you have any other statement or that you'd like to make?
Well, I just wanted to make, the only statement I have is the reason why, why this tower is going up is number one, the tower that is just on the other side is at capacity, as far as even like wind load and stuff like that. With this tower, it's also gonna bring more competition to the area. We're gonna be able to also feed more of the customers from, actually guests in Independent School District, they pay for free internet for the kids, and that tower is gonna serve within a five-mile radius off of that tower, will serve those students as well.
Questions of the applicant, we're all good? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any members of the public? For or against this? You wanna speak? Okay, I'll, and Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion. I move for a conditional approval of case number SU two four dash zero three two.
Second.
With staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fisher, second by Commissioner Zerniak. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Oduanga?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zargis?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on. Z twenty-five dash double oh one, zone change from I three to C three.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Albert Casillas, eight forty-five North Motel Boulevard.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
That's just for you, Albert.
Huh?
We, we do that just for you.
Commissioners, members of the public, our last case today, we're gonna have a, a zone change. The property owner is Mr. Armando Reina, and then the applicant's gonna be Michael Bursum with the SAM Center Foundation. This property is located at forty-one fifty-three Dripping Springs Road, east of Las Cruces, it's right next to the, the Farming Ranch Museum, per circle, museum. Current zoning is, is I three on the property, and the, the property size is twenty point eight seven acres, and the applicant's basically proposing to downzone from I three to, to S C three, which would be a regional commercial zoning district. And this is in order to allow a multi-sport recreational facility to be known as Sunflower Sports Center. So when we look at the location map, this is the location of the twenty acres, it's Dripping Springs Road, so the, the Farming Ranch Museum is basically right here to the west. To the north of, of the parcel, we, we have a Centennial High School, and, you know, when we look at the aerials, we'll, we're probably the next aerials, we'll, we'll see where we're at exactly. But this is Dripping Springs Road right here, and then this is the, the location of the twenty acres. You can kind of see Centennial right up here to, to the, to the north of that. I'll have some, some other photos that, that you, you can see it better. When we look at the zoning map, you know, you basically have other, you know, industrial designations around there. Centennial High School to the north, Farming Ranch to, to the west, and other residential lots. Most of it, you know, it's either NMSU property or federal or, or state land. So prior to twenty seventeen, this property did have that EI three C designation, which was basically for industrial uses, that due to the nature of their business, they caused some levels of air or noise pollution. This property received that, that designation in twenty twelve, and that was via case number Z twelve zero zero three, where they actually went from, you know, that public conservation district to that industrial classification, and that was to operate the Doñana sand and gravel mining operation, so that goes back to, to twenty twelve. And then once, of course, we adopted the UDC, it went from the EI three C to, to the I three. The, the C, under that original approval, basically what the ETA Commission did back then, eliminated a lot of the uses that were allowed under that industrial zoning classification, and basically just said, hey, we're only gonna allow you to do the, you know, the mining operation and anything associated with the mining operation. mining operation and anything associated with the mining operation. And currently, right now, like I said, it I3 allows for those heavy industrial activities. Water and gas, potentially sewer, is available for the city of Las Cruces. If they're not able to extend sewer, they're going to have to, you know, install a, a subject tank for, for the facility. Dripping Springs Road is a paved county maintained 60-foot right-of-way road. And of course, the request is to establish what would be a multi-sport recreational facility to be known as Sunflower Sports Center, access being from, from Dripping Springs. And, you know, just to read a little bit off of, you know, the, their, their statement, and I'm sure, you know, the applicant will come up here and, you know, explain it a little bit more, but the, the SAM Center Foundation is dedicated to fostering personal growth, academic excellence, civic responsibility in every young person served. To fulfill this mission, you know, they're going to establish, equip, and manage the Sunflower Sports Center, and scholarship and community outreach program in Las Cruces, New Mexico will be available. The, the center will provide indoor sports courts at below-market rates to volleyball, basketball, and other youth clubs in Las Cruces and the surrounding area. In addition to helping clubs reduce operating expenses, the Sunflower Sports Center will provide clubs with amenities such as individual cages to store equipment, team meeting space, a shared cross-training space with weight systems, and the court capacity to allow teams to train multiple age groups at the same time. The goal being to greatly increase youth participation in team sports. The center will also have an open gym for the community to enjoy, as well as outdoor gathering spaces. To further support the youth of Las Cruces and the surrounding community, SAM Center Foundation is developing an athletic and academic scholarship program. The athletic scholarship will be, will be need-based and distributed equitably amongst the various clubs utilizing the Sunflower Sports Center. So here we have a conceptual side plan of the facility. We basically, this would be the, the south, west, the corner of their property, so that's where their entrance is going to be. And then, we have parking areas, and then this is where their, the building's actually going to, going to be located. Just zooming in on that, you know, their proposed sports complex, it's about 4,800 square feet. There's additional space for, you know, for the front building and then covered areas as well.
It's 48,000 square feet.
Is that what I said?
Is it?
Thank you. Forty-eight thousand.
Those plus your miles.
Did I say 4,800? No, that's 48,000. Sorry. But that's basically what the, you know, what the proposed layout's going to look like, parking areas, and then some ponding areas on the other end, on, on the eastern portion of the property. When we look at the, the aerial, you know, kind of zoomed out a little bit more, of course, then we can see, you know, where the, where the location is in relation to, you know, the Centennial High School, Farm and Ranch, nearby, you know, residences, Tortugas Mountains, and of course, NMSU property and their, you know, their, their golf course over here. This is the, the current entrance to the subject parcel, and this is off of Dripping Springs Road. You can see that right next to, to the Farm and Ranch. You can already see the buildings here for, for Centennial. And this is more of the, you know, the, the area where the proposed building will be, will be located. Some more pictures. Exiting the property, we're heading west into Las Cruces, you know, that's what Dripping Springs looks like. This is heading up east, you know, towards Tortugas Mountains and the Talavera area. A view of, of the Farm and Ranch, and then right across Dripping Springs into NMSU property. And then, just another view. So when looking at zone changes, we got to look at section 203 for decisional criteria requirements. Those were the, the property owners that were notified. Twenty-two letters were mailed out, no letters in opposition or in favor were received for this request. When we look at the decision of criteria, you know, they're not proposing any, any additional residential development. There's no change in population or demographics. No large impact to traffic flows is anticipated. Driveways will be located on Dripping Springs Road at an appropriate distance from the intersection of Sonoma Ranch Boulevard. Acceleration and deceleration lanes will be constructed on the north side of Dripping Springs Road. If warranted by traffic engineering analysis, the site and facility will be designed and constructed in compliance with the EDC requirements. Dripping Springs Road is a county maintained right-of-way, right-of-way. It's classified as major arterial by the Mecia Valley MBO. The need for new commercial activity, I mean, the zone change will allow the applicant to operate a multi-sport recreational facility. The applicant states that Doña Ana County and the Las Cruces area currently lacks an indoor space suitable for sports tournaments, resulting in fewer opportunities for youth to engage in recreational and competitive sports without traveling. The proposed Sunflower Sports Center and required land use zone change is beneficial to the community and the local economy. Like I said before, when it comes to water and sewer, water, gas, and potentially sewer is available for the city of Las Cruces, wastewater could also be handled by an approved subject tank. So we do believe that there is sufficient infrastructure capacity for the proposed use. Access to the Las Cruces utility sewer system is pending further design considerations, but like, but like I said, a, a subject tank could also work. No evidence submitted that there are any endangered or rare species of animal and plant life in the area. The property is surrounded by federal land and NMSU's south. Existing uses within the area of notification include the Farm and Ranch Museum and Centennial High School. If approved, buffer landscaping, broad improvements, applicable fire, life safety, and building services requirements will have to be met during the building permitting process. And of course, implementation of best management practices will be followed by the applicant if approved. So, you know, looking at the request, and when it comes to this section of the decision of criteria, we do believe that, that it, it meets this, this section. Goals of the, the comp plan in support of the zone change, I mean, we do believe that the request of the zone change does meet, you know, the requirements of the section, and it's not in conflict with the comp plan. And once again, I'm going to point to goal G2, point two, that's one of the goals in support. I'm also going to look at, there's, you know, there's sections in the code, in, in the comp plan that encourage, you know, recreational options to improve county health, supporting small-scale businesses, including agriculture. And then, G10.4 talks about new communities should enable active lifestyles, obesity, and the diseases associated with, may, may be circumvented through active lifestyles. So it's, so it is promoting a, a healthy, you know, lifestyle, being active, you know, and those kind of items. When it comes to the, the Miller criteria, when addressing the sufficient change of conditions, we do believe that there is evidence of a change of conditions, making this zone change reasonably necessary to protect the public interest, such as, you know, the construction of Centennial High School, additional residential development to the east, you know, in the Talavera area, extension of Sonoma Ranch Boulevard and population growth. The zone change is not intended to cover and perfect the previous defective ordinance or to correct mistakes or injustices. If denied, you know, the property can still be used as a, as a rock quarry, as allowed by the zone change in 2012. We don't believe that this would be considered spot zoning. The proposed zone change to C3 is in harmony with existing uses, such as the Farm and Ranch and Heritage Museum and Centennial High School. The property size is 20 acres, and there will be a benefit to the community by allowing the construction of a multi-sport recreational facility that will support the youth of Las Cruces and surrounding communities. So our staff findings are, they're included in your packet, but we're basically stating that a C3 does satisfy the decision of criteria for a zone change. That it's not considered a spot zone, and that it's not in conflict with the, with the comprehensive plan, just based on those goals and actions that I stated during my presentation. So based on our findings of fact, on, on our analysis, agency comments, we are recommending approval of case Z25001. And with that, you know, that's the end of my presentation. We do have the applicant and their, their engineer here as well for, for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Albert, do they need driveway access permits from the state?
Dripping Springs is a county maintained road that will just have, it would have to go through a county engineering. And I am going to point out that, you know, a couple, a couple months ago, we did have a pre-application meeting with the applicant. So county engineering, county fire, marshal, building services, they're all aware of this, this project.
Okay.
Okay, can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good morning.
Hi, morning.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Michael Bursum. I live at 3952 Lomobella Drive, excuse me, Las Cruces, New Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And feel free to raise the mic if you need.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd, I'd like to start by thanking the, the commissioners here today for, for hearing this case and for the planning and zoning commission's work, committee's work. And I, I do apologize in advance, I do. I guess I don't need to say it now. I get a little choked up when I think about this project. So how, how much time do I have? Hopefully, I'm not put on a two-minute timer. Might need a little more time than that. But I do get a little choked up from time to time. But I want to tell you a little bit first about how we got to where we are. If I can. First, before I tell you about the SAM Center Foundation and the proposed development, which Albert has done an excellent job of, of giving us an overview of, I should provide a little context. My daughter Samantha Bursum was in a tragic auto accident that took her life on March 1st, about a year ago. Sam, as she was called, was a straight A student, first in her class, spoke three languages, English, Spanish, French, studied Portuguese and Italian on her own. Was a star athlete and a good all-around friend to many. She was involved in just about every club Las Cruces Public Schools offered. Sam liked to make things better in her community, and when she thought she could help someone, she would. I wrote this out so it'd be easy to get through. I have reflected on Sam's childhood growing up in Las Cruces and wondered why Sam was such a good kid. Sure, her parents always gave her lots of encouragement, but what made Sam Sam was not that alone. The answer, Sam always had an incredibly supportive community around her. Sam was always surrounded by friends, educators, coaches, who believed in her, and who would encourage her to do big things.
It's okay, take your time.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Sam had mentors, too. People she could always look up to and go to for advice. In short, it was her community that made her the outstanding young adult that she had become. It is in Sam's spirit that I'm taking on the challenge of developing a sports recreation center, in hopes to create an environment where more kids can have the opportunity that Sam had. Sam's mom never cries, but apparently I got that gene. It is in Sam's spirit that I'm taking on the challenge of developing a sports recreation center in hopes I can create an environment where more kids can have the opportunities that Sam had. An environment where more kids feel supported and encouraged to do big things. I want to create a center where more kids have mentors like those that shaped Sam. An environment where kids learn to work together as part of a team and work towards something bigger than themselves. I want an environment where kids can recreate exercise, improve their mental health, and work to be the best version of themselves. I know developing the Sunflower Sports Center is not the only answer to supporting youth in our community, but I believe it is a part of the solution. Sam is a fifth generation... Sam's a fifth-generation New Mexican. She was raised to do what was right, even when it was not easy or convenient. Sam's family on her mother and father's side have always worked to make New Mexico better in one way or another, and to pay it forward to the next generation. And, and I might go on a side note and say, since I know NMSU is here today with us, Scott, that it was Samantha's great-grandfather, who back in 1933 was a regent at New Mexico State University and helped New Mexico State University re-attain its accreditation back in the day. And they had a, a building named after him recently, which they tore down. But that's an example of how we've been around a long time, and this project is no different. It's about paying it forward. I would like to give some special thanks to Armando Reyna, who could not be here today, or I do not believe is here. And he had received multiple full-price offers for this piece of land, and he, he refused to sell this piece of property because he wanted it to go to a public benefit. And he's unfortunately been dealing with a bit of tragedy in his own life recently, but he was at one point planning on, on trying to put a church on this property. So he, when he heard about what we were doing, he was very excited about the possibility of building a, a youth center or a community center. So since Sam is not here to do this important work and change the world like she was going to, that now falls on us. So as Albert mentioned, the SAM Center Foundation, it is a 501(c)(3) qualified public charity, and it is dedicated to fostering personal growth, academic excellence, civic responsibility. It plans to have a scholarship program, it's going to have a civic responsibility program, and it's going to be working with all of the area clubs in Las Cruces and developing new club programs that will help to maximize youth participation in team sports in Las The, the center, as Albert mentioned, I think we stated there, is about a 48,000-square-foot facility. We, that, that is probably at a minimum what we would like to construct. Our, ideally, what we're hoping for is to develop a facility that will have 10 full-size volleyball courts and would also have about six basketball courts. So we see the facility really working as, it's, it's a fairly low-intensity facility despite the size. It will be used by a lot of clubs in the area and, and for, for their daily practice facility. And also, our hope is to bring in regional competitions, so that way, Las Cruces can be a destination much like Lubbock, Midland, El Paso are for these types of events. So we do believe it's going to have quite a large economic impact on the community. However, during the week, we do not anticipate any kind of intense usage of the facility, which we, I, I think is a good thing for many reasons. The center is going to be connected via, to the local trail system. I, I helped actually start an organization in Las Cruces called the Southern New Mexico Trail Alliance, which is the trail arm of the Bureau of Land Management. And we already have plans underway to connect this area to communities that are going to be going up north and to new trails that are being built around a mountain. So we very much see this facility as a destination, especially when we have events, which will normally take place on the weekend. And where you have visitors coming from out of town, they're going to be lining at this facility. They're going to have the Farm and Ranch Heritage Museum next door, which we think will be a, a huge plus for the Farm and Ranch Heritage Museum. It's very likely to increase, increase attendance there as well. It'll have that educational component to it for families who, I don't know if any of you have ever been to a tournament, a volleyball tournament, or a, a youth sporting event like this, but it's not unlike being in a casino all day, where there are no windows generally in some of these buildings, and, and you're there watching sports, and your kids are playing, then they're not playing. You could be there for eight hours at a time. So a facility like this will cater to people coming from out of town. They'll be able to, to arrive here, they'll be able to go next door to the Farm and Ranch, possibly have a meal there. We'll have our own possible cafe area where they'll be able to lounge. They'll have the, the trail system, they'll be able to go out and walk and explore the monuments. So the location that we've chosen for this, you know, we've spent a lot of time looking for a location. I don't think anybody here, granted, there are not many people here, would disagree that Las Cruces needs a facility like this. You know, that's, that's probably, that's not what we're here to, to talk about today. It's whether or not this location is appropriate or not. And because we have spent so much time thinking about what is going to be the impact of this facility in this area, that's, that's where, where we've come to believe, where, where we know, we know this will be a true landmark for Las Cruces. It's going to be a jumping-off point for people who come to Las Cruces who want to explore the Oregon Mountain Desert Peaks National Monument. It's going to be a... It's going to be a recreational hub, especially for non-motorized people who would like to experience the center. And because we don't really see the center getting a tremendous amount of usage, it's really, it's, we're really building more facility than Las Cruces needs. But we also believe that gives, that presents some opportunity. It presents an opportunity for neighbors who live in the existing area, who will be able to access the trails, especially the Tolivera community and really any community that is on the east side of I-25. It's a completely underserved area, as has been noted by city officials for some time, hence why the city was interested in building the East Mesa Recreation Center. We also did not want to duplicate what the East Mesa Recreation Center had done. You know, that's, we're not looking to, we're not competing with the city, we're not competing with anybody to try to say, no, we want to have all of the visitors come to our center. We are complementing existing facilities in the area. You know, specifically, that's why we're choosing to do indoor facilities. So, why we like the indoor sports, why we like the covered sand volleyball and indoor pickleball and things like that, that will be accessed at the center. So, we see the community using this facility. You could bring your bike, you can ride down, go around a mountain on the new trail that's being constructed right now. You'll be able to get into the center and you'll be able to play pickleball first thing in the morning, probably when nobody's there. And a facility that's going to have the capacity for 10 pickleball courts. And then afterwards, you'd be able to go to the cafe, maybe have a cup of coffee, sit out and look at the view. That's, that is probably one of the most underappreciated areas in Las Cruces. And when you go out there, it's, I guess possibly due to inflation, you can't say it has a million-dollar view, it has a $10 million view, $100 million view. You can't replace or replicate a view like that. So, we do see this as a place where visitors will land. This is a place that people will remember when they come to Las Cruces. And it's, you know, I see, it is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to try to get something like this established. And I'm very excited, as you can tell, finally. It's better just to speak from the heart and tell you what I really think about this facility. There are a lot of details and a lot of information that I have that I can provide you. We have talked about physical suitability for the area. We know as far as creating an economic benefit, we know it is in the right place. We're very excited about being close to New Mexico State University and to the Farm and Ranch Heritage Museum. I was mentioning to Scott a few minutes ago that we very much see ourselves as being a good neighbor. You know, our facility will likely be the largest clear-span building in Las Cruces. And by clear-span, it means we don't have vertical supports coming down within the building. And that's, you know, by design because it's very difficult to have both volleyball and basketball in a facility that has a lot of vertical supports holding up the rafters. So, the facility will be available for a lot of different kinds of community uses and that, for us, is very exciting. I see us really having a partnership with Farm and Ranch. Yeah, I would love it and that's, as we continue to move down this road and hopefully we're able to, I see us having a partnership with the Farm and Ranch where maybe there's some way to physically link the properties because we would love our visitors to be able to walk, to take a trail all the way to the museum at the Farm and Ranch and things like that. So, we expect to maintain some very high standards for this property. As we've already pointed out, it is a former rock quarry. It is within five minutes of I-25 and that's very important as well. It's very easy to get to and it's for, and it's very easy to find for not just local residents, but for people traveling from out of town. I actually, we actually see the facility taking traffic off of Dripping Springs Road, especially after school is out. I don't know if any of you have seen or driven up Dripping Springs Road when it's time for everyone to go to school, but your traffic is backed up past Farm and Ranch Heritage Museum. And that's before we, you know, that's without our facility being there. You know, we already recognize that we are going to need to make sure we have good acceleration and deceleration lanes so that cars can move off of Dripping Springs Road. We're already planning on taking care of that. But I could actually, we actually see where kids who are going to the Sunflower Sports Center to train after school, instead of just driving down Dripping Springs Road like they might normally, they'll actually, they'll be turning and going into our facility. So, in effect, it will actually be taking some traffic away from the area and will not be affecting any traffic on, during the morning rush hour. We have had a Phase 1 environmental study completed on the site and the site came back clean. There were no recognized environmental conditions. So, the last thing you'd want to do, obviously, is to have a recreation center in a contaminated site. So, of course, we, that was one of the first things we did to make sure that the site is clean and it is. And it was also recognized that there was, there were no environmental, there was no environmental contamination or visible, at least on any of the adjoining properties as well. They were, they were very thorough in their environmental assessment. We do recognize that this is not an easy site to restore and to build on and will require extensive reclamation. And we're, we are prepared to deal with all of the deficiencies that this site currently has. In terms of financial capability, we have a broad community support and we have the funds available to begin immediately on the site. And our next step will be to close on this property, which will occur on Monday, the 17th, on St. Patrick's Day. Our timetable, should we receive approval for the zone change, we could potentially begin, and we are going to be in the reclamation phase for some time, but breaking up concrete maybe as early as May of this year. And we would like to try, the goal originally was to try to get this facility open. Open by the time Sam would have graduated high school, so. And we're still shooting for that deadline of probably first quarter 2027. Let's see if I've covered. I think that about covers everything, just a broad overview. If you have specific questions about the facility itself, how we plan to design it, we have how we plan to operate it, that's probably something I should let you know. We are working with a company called Sports Facility Advisory out of Florida and they've established community recreation centers in about 2,500 different communities. So, we're going to have them come in and help us with some pre-design on the facility. And that's where we, at this moment, you know, we know we're going to have bathrooms, we know we're going to have certain features within this building. We don't know exactly where they will go in this building yet. And we're not going to pretend to be experts on building recreation centers, but we are going to have those who are help us. So, Sports Facility Advisory will come in and help us, they'll help train our employees, they'll help actually run the facility once it's going. And so, we want to make sure that we're promoting the facility properly, that we're maintaining proper safety standards and, and we, we have some fantastic board members that are part of the Sam Center Foundation. And one of them said, you know, he said, I made the comment, said, "We're going to run this like Disneyland." You know, this place is going to be clean, everything is going to function, it's going to be safe, you're going to see people out there, we're going to be employing lots of kids. It's going to be incredible. But with that, I have no further information to present, but if you'd like to pick my brain and ask me more specifically about what I see or how I see this building, what I think it will look like, I could probably paint a picture for you. Keeping it simple today, no, no PowerPoint presentation, so. Is this an appropriate time to ask questions?
Questions for the applicant?
I have one question. You had mentioned several times, working together with a community, working together with Farm and Ranch Museum. You also mentioned Tortugas Mountain. One thing you failed to mention, which takes place there every year, is a pilgrimage to Tortugas Mountain from the pueblo out here near Mesia Park. Have you spoken with anybody out of the pueblo or do you plan on working alongside the pueblo for the pilgrimage to help provide any, you know, whether it be parking or any kind of assistance to the pueblo itself?
That's a.
I mean, it's out of the way of the pilgrimage, but it's just right off the mountain. Again, it's something that you had mentioned and it just sparked some curiosity in my mind. This Farm and Ranch Museum is actually also in the process of creating an exhibit for the pueblo itself.
Interesting, thank you. Thank you for that information. And I had not thought about that particular pilgrimage and I have participated myself in the past. And I have looked at all of the parking, you know, where they park up and down Dripping Springs Road. And you always know when it's going on. That is a great example of where the Sam Center Foundation will be able to partner. You know, we, for things like that, we'll have over 500 parking spaces. You know, that's, we're 500-plus. I think we'd like to err on the side of having more than we need. So, if you could imagine where we could actually pull all of that traffic, all of that parking, could park at Sunflower reasonably, very easily. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, that's exactly what we're looking to do. I actually have spoken with the Bureau of Land Management as well and I said, you know, what, what can we do to help you develop bathrooms over around A-Mountain? You know, we have, there are people who are on our advisory committee, the Suggs family, who has Johnny Septic. And I've talked to Wayne about putting in some commercial Septic and said, "Would you, would you help us put some commercial Septic around A-Mountain?" Because I also help put on events, running events around A-Mountain and we could really utilize, the public could really use some bathrooms there and pave those parking lots because they're a nuisance. You probably, you almost lose part of your car when you drive up the driveway to A-Mountain, right? So, I could see, you know, we see, we don't see our footprint as just being on that 21 acres. We're going to, you know, we see the whole area having to work together. And by that, we want it to function. You know, I want people who are on mountain bikes, you know, and on walking trails, I want them to funnel into our center. And we have a lot of great ideas as to how we can do that safely to get kids into our center. And so, so yeah, that's absolutely. Should Farm and Ranch Heritage Museum, for example, need some extra exhibit space one weekend and here we have a 50,000-square-foot clear-span building, could the Farm and Ranch Heritage Museum utilize that? Absolutely. That's where I think, that's where we're going to excel, you know, at being a partner to Farm and Ranch and to NMSU. I have spoken, one of my neighbors is the manager of the convention center here in Las Cruces and he's very excited about it because potentially one, someday, it might be the case that the convention center expands to host a lot of these big tournaments and I'm glad, I'm going to tell you about this, but there, these tournaments can be quite large. They bring in, they'll bring in volleyball teams from Arizona, Texas, really from the region. People will fly in, I've seen teams flying from Alaska to events in Arizona because they have to fly everywhere, they live in Alaska. So, the nice thing is potentially in kind of a partnership relationship where NMSU has a convention space with ton of ceilings where they can accommodate indoor volleyball. You know, we have, the tournament is, tournaments are spread out kind of throughout the city. Some of them, some of the games might be taking place at a high school, you know, say at a Las Cruces high school or at NMSU Convention Center and then over at the Sunflower Center. So, what it does is it spreads, all the people who come to Las Cruces, it spreads them around. And, and that is, that's fantastic because, you know, you can never have enough hotel rooms. We don't want everybody coming to the Sunflower Sports Center for really, really big events. We want to utilize the existing high schools that are there. Currently, the high school, and I have been speaking with the superintendent about this as well, and he's very much in support of not only what we're doing, but where it's going. And I said, you know, he's like, he's like, "I would love to have this in my backyard," meaning it's right next to Centennial High School. So, yeah, I think it's going to open up the public schools, which, you know, even these clubs, all these club teams, these are Las Cruces-area school students, you know, and for whatever reason, once they play club, it's there, it's difficult for those clubs to access high school gym space. And, and you can go on any weekend, you could go to any public school and all of those gyms are going to be empty. It's because there's not a clear plan on how to manage that space because it puts wear and tear on those facilities. So, we're hoping, and I'll be honest, when my, when my daughter had her accident, Keith LuPaul from, I was doing so well there for a minute, from Las Cruces, yes, my daughter played for him and he opened up his school to having a memorial tournament where all the clubs came and played at Las Cruces High School and Centennial. You know, that is the first time I've seen that happen, where the schools have opened up their gyms to the clubs. So, you know, I think there's a bit of growing pain that we're going to experience in Las Cruces, but that's exactly the direction that we need to be going. We need to be able to have a way for, so that our kids who are growing up here, just because they're playing club, we need to be able to access more, more facilities. And so, we're, you know, we're in a position right now where we're not building the center to make a profit. I personally will not be paid, none of my board of directors will be paid. Our sole goal is to make the center self-sufficient and we're lucky that we're in that kind of position. I tell people that, you know, it takes about four things to make a project like this work and that is, you know, you have to have the motivation, you have to have the energy, you have to have the time, and you have to have the resources, you know. And, and right now, you know, I'm young enough, I'd like to think, to take on a project like that. In five years, 10 years, I may not be. And I think that's why a lot of these public-private partnerships never work out. It's really hard to have everything working together at the same time. With that said, you know, we've, we have gone to a lot of different organizations and met with a lot of businesses and a lot of investors. We have yet to receive one no on anything right now. We have, we have funding coming in all the time to support and build out this center and all we really need is a little bit of time and we can get it done.
Great. Wish you the best.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Any further questions for the applicant?
I just, I don't have a question, but I definitely, my condolences to you and your family for your loss and I applaud the effort that you're trying to put into this project.
Thank you.
Anything further, Commissioner? Ask for a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move a motion on number Z25-001 for approval.
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Jimenez, second by Commissioner Fisher. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Oranga?
Definitely yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zarjes?
Yes. Lead me into a soccer facility, though.
That's in Phase 2.
Sorry, I'm a soccer coach, what can I say? Moving on, administrative approvals.
Chair, none at this point.
Commission input, or staff input, I'm sorry, nothing.
Nothing, sir.
Where's our pizza?
Well, Janine was, I don't know where she went. She, we sent an email to three, we will have three vacancies for the Planning and Zoning Commission. We sent the emails out, it's already been posted as well on the website with the deadline of April 2nd is what I believe it is.
I think, who are those commissioners?
It's Commissioner Jimenez, Chair Zarjes, and Commissioner, Vice Chair Zerniak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do that. Okay, commission input.
Just following up on the request that Commissioner Fisher had made on the presentation from Mr. Jerry Pacheco, is anybody, are we online to talk to, to have him do that presentation anytime soon?
Commissioner Oranga, Chair, I know Janine replied back to you and I think we're going to postpone that maybe till next month just because we knew that this month, our schedule's going to be pretty full, but it is in the works.
Okay, just keep us posted. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned. We're out of here.